Okay. Welcome to the April 2nd special meeting of the planning board. Again, we are going over the changes that the town council is going to make to the ordinances. Our role has been defined by the town council. It is merely to give a thumbs up or thumbs down, as council had pointed out. Actually, both councils pointed out. So we will work through things. For those of you who are new, we have had very respectful meetings with people staying on topic and trying to stay away from emotions and stuff. So if we pack the house, it seems we have less people each meeting. So I will give you time to speak, but stay on topic, please. I'll turn it over to staff to start us out.
Good evening, everyone.
I was pointed out I need to do role. So would you call role, please?
Stephen D. Cimmello.
Here.
Rupert Friday.
Here.
Tom Callahan.
Rose.
Dr. O'Neil.
Here.
Mark Brady.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, your final number.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Jill Sabo, Director of Planning. We're here tonight. So behind me on the projector, you're going to see that we've already scratched off the first two meetings and we've been able to stay on schedule. Tonight, we're going to tackle the two-family dwelling duplex as well as the environmental regulations. And then I wanted to point out as well that we did add an additional meeting, which is on April 8th. And that will be the final meeting where we'll go over the recommendation. And that will be the night that you actually make your one vote and review the recommendation. So for anyone out there, that meeting will also be here in this room on Tuesday, April 8th. Also, as I've done the last two evenings, I want to point out that we are under that 45-day time limit. It is one referral, one vote, and we are charged with our recommendation, which is the consistency with the comprehensive plan and findings of purposes of zoning. So those are the two references, and we'll go over those a little bit in more detail as we get closer. But I just want to have that in everyone's mind when you're making comments, when you're thinking about things, when you're really hashing it out, that we really need to be looking at the consistency for the comprehensive plan. And that's labeled, it's all listed in the draft, in the report that I gave to you, and the purposes of zoning. I gave you all 16 purposes of zoning. Okay, again, tonight, April 2nd, we're going to first tackle the two-family development, and that's chapters 1117 and 1124. Excellent. Thank you. So, okay, so starting with two-family development. In January of 2024, the 2024 state law mandate became effective. And it said, and I'm going to read it, I pulled it from H 6059, which was the bill that it came from. A substandard lot of record shall not be required to seek any zoning relief based solely on the failure to meet minimum lot size requirements of the district in which the lot is located, such lot is located. So what that means is if it's a permitted use and it's a substandard lot, you wouldn't need to seek relief if you didn't meet the underlying area. It is specifically with the case of two-family developments in town, in Narragansett, up until May of 2024, two-family developments were permitted by right in R 10, R 10A, and R 20 zones. However, the lot area and the lot width was a different number instead of 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet. In an R 10 zone, it was 20,000 square feet. In an R 20 zone, it was 30,000 square feet. So had you come in prior to January of 2024 looking for a two-family development and you didn't meet that minimum lot area or width requirement, you would have gone to the zoning board to seek that relief. So at that time, when the law passed, the town looked at the impact of what that would be, of what the new law would be. Oh, and before I go any further, I want to read you the second half of that law, which says that the setback frontage and/or lot width requirements for a structure under this section shall be reduced by the maximum building coverage requirements shall be increased by the same proportion as the lot area, the substandard lot, is to the minimum lot area requirement of the zoning district in which the lot is located. Essentially, what that means is if you are a 50%, if you are a 5,000-square-foot lot in an R 10, you're 50% noncompliant and your setbacks in frontage would go to 50%. So 10-foot side yard setback would drop to five feet. And then it goes on to say, "All proposals exceeding such reduced requirements shall proceed with a modification." So in that example, 10-foot side yard setback at a 50% area deficiency would go to five feet, and then you could apply for the modification on top of that. You might recall, we touched on that last week as well. It allows pretty large homes.
Would you take questions as you go along?
Oh, yeah, sure. Dr. O'Neil, sure.
Yeah, when you said that, the idea that the dimensions can be reduced by X percent.
Mm-hmm.
How about, you know, we're talking about the set numbers, like fire lane in terms of the parameters. So if it was five feet, it could go to 2.5 feet?
Yes. So, Dr., this is exactly what came up last week, where this board found that to be a health and safety concern. And your determination last time around was, in January, was that frankly, health and safety trumped the law.
It's more than a concern. It's a national and state and local standard. But in any case, that's interesting.
Yep. So you did. So this board, and ultimately the council, did approve that anything less than five feet for a two-story or eight feet for a three-story would need to seek a variance.
Right. But whoever constructed that law wasn't sort of thinking along those lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah. And actually, this commission, this board had a unanimous consensus on that. So that was great. Okay, so getting back to where we were in 2024. So I have up here just some numbers. So you're going to see that we had approximately 8,700 lots in the R 10, R 10A, and R 20 zones altogether. And that's approximately, I didn't go through it with a fine-tooth comb. This is 30,000 feet. Of those 6,100 lots in the R 10 and R 10A zone, 2,800 of those R 10 and R 10A zones are less than 10,000 square feet. So it's about 47%. And 5,300 at the time were less than 20,000 square feet, which was the requirement at the time for a two-family development. And in the R 20 zone, we have about 2,500 lots total. 700 of those are less than 10,000. 1,300 were less than, I'm sorry, 1,300 were less than 20,000. And about 1,400 were less than 30,000. And that was the threshold and the parameter for two-family at the time and in R 20. So all, again, that was 8,700 lots. And of those 8,700 lots, about 48% or 4,200 were substandard for their zone, and about 77 of them were substandard for a two-family. Also, at the time, this board was contemplating, and it hadn't taken place through the state yet, but it was coming down the pike, and we could see it, that accessory dwelling units were going to become permitted by right. And in fact, that happened. They are now permitted by right on any residential lot of 20,000 square feet or more, and on any other lot less than 20,000 square feet within the existing footprint of the dwelling or the accessory structure. So with all of that, at that time, this board, it was brought to your attention, and we had some commentary at the time through the report from the town engineer, that the sewer water and infrastructure was not designed for this potential density increase. And then the density increase was also not contemplated in the comprehensive plan. Ironically, it was not also contemplated from Veolia Water. So Veolia contacts us every year and asks us if their plan, or I shouldn't say every year, I got it this year, to ask us if their plan was consistent with our comprehensive plan. And I pointed out that, in fact, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, but it doesn't account, and neither does our comprehensive plan, for this possible density increase. And I let them know at that time, this is about eight months ago or six months ago, that they might want to be aware of this, that there is a potential or a possibility of a big density increase. So that could be a two-family plus an ADU, so essentially three units on lots that do not contemplate water, sewer, or infrastructure. I do want to point out again that it's the substandard lot. So for those who might not be aware, it's that substandard lot. So it's the setbacks that are smaller plus the modification, 15% modification on that. Ultimately, in May of 2024, the town council approved that amendment change. I'd like to point out that in June of '24, the law changed again. And in this time, it made a little bit of a change about the building setbacks and coverage and lot width requirements. So instead of going directly to the proportional substandardness of the lot, it said, "If your lot is compliant to another zone, then you can use that other zone." So if you had a 15,000-square-foot lot in a zone, in an R 20 zone, that lot would be compliant with an R 10 zone, and so you could use the R 10 setbacks as opposed to the R, doing the, in that case, it would be 25%. And, but it said, "In a case where your lot," and there are very many cases of this in town, certainly, as I mentioned, 700 in the R 20, and let me just see how many, 2,800 in the R 10, and that's just R 10 and R 20. That's not R 40, that's not R 80. But for any lot that's less than 10,000 square, it's less than the minimum of our smallest zone, then that proportional allowance goes back to the underlying zone. So I used the example last week of an 8,500-square-foot lot in an R 80 zone, which is about 90% deficient of the underlying zone. So it doesn't even meet the R 10. And if it was in an R 80 zone, it would go back to 90%. So that means you get 90% off your setbacks, 90% of your additional lot coverage of that zone. Now, an R 80 zone has different setbacks than an R 10 zone, but it works out to be, Dr. O'Neil, less than five feet in some instances. All right. Okay, so the ordinance, I just want to point out a couple of things. I know I did it in the report, but just, I want to point out a couple of things that we have. The ordinance, what I found is it actually leaves gaps, and it can create, what I've noticed, it creates a little bit of confusion. It could create confusion for employees as well as applicants.
This is the new ordinance that they're putting through?
This is the one that they're putting through. Yep. So are we there yet? I'm sorry. Let me get there. Nope. Back up. Yes. Yep. This is the one that they're putting through. So the one that they're putting through creates a few gaps. They are referencing standards that haven't been removed. So one of the things they did do, by the way, is they removed the specific and objective special use criteria, but they didn't remove the references to those criteria. Those aren't removed. One of the things that we had done, that the council, previous council, had done was remove the, in the dimensional regulations, they removed the two-family. That was not added back in. So there's no dimensional regulations for two-family developments, if there even should be. And one of the other things that happened with the removal of the special use permit criteria, it actually removed a provision for affordable housing. There was a provision in that criteria that was really beneficial for affordable housing, and so that was also stricken. Again, I want to remind this board that there is no change, there's been no remarkable change, there's been no change to the comprehensive plan and no remarkable change to water, sewer, or infrastructure, and the density wasn't contemplated. In my report, I did mention to you, and I will do it again here, that you may want to refer to the previous recommendation that you provided to the town council and reflect on that and see if anything has changed or if those findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan and the purposes of zoning still apply. That's it.
Dr. O'Neil, you want to pick this up or should? I was going to review how we got to our proposal from last year and why we brought it to the town council. Do you guys want me to just wait for my turn to do that? Do it now? Okay. All right. So when the ordinance came down, when the new ordinance came down, it was by right. And I think it's important for people to understand legally what "by right" means. I mean, it's a very powerful phrase in legalese, as councils tell you. It's frightening from the other side of it, in the fact that little control is now available. So it is a legal context. By right or as of right means a project or action is permitted under existing laws or regulations without requiring special permit, variance, or discretionary approvals from a local government. By right signifies that the development or use is permitted under the zoning ordinance or bylaw without the need for discretionary review or approval. And this comes from the state. So we looked at it, and we looked at the impact on the community. So if we can go through the next slide. No, no. Thank you. So this would be R 10, R 20. And presently, there are approximately 8,700 lots that qualify for duplex by right in Narragansett. And we looked at that, and we kind of took a step back. And R 10 and R 20 are our most densely populated, developed areas. They are also our most sensitive because of the fact that they are our smallest lots. So we looked at, what is the impact of this on the community? If you can go to the next slide. So these are the neighborhoods that are affected, essentially most of Narragansett. When you get to those numbers, you're talking Petzskwamskit, Metatuxit, Sandal Cove, Bonnet Shores, Great Island, Harbor Island, you name it, it's in there, Eastwood Look. So we started then saying, "Okay, if this happens, what happens?" And that's the responsible thing to do. And that's what this board does. Some people don't understand that or don't want to understand what we do, but we take a look and say, "What if? What happens? Why?" And we delve in. So we delved into this. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay. So these show the different lot lines. Again, the neighborhoods are listed. Thanks, next one. Just break it down, north end, south end.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Amanda, if you back up one slide. One more. There you go. So these are all of the lots, as I just mentioned, that are noncompliant in an R 10 zone. So all the lots in black are less than 10,000 square feet. All the lots in red throughout town are less than 20,000 square feet. So in every area in town where there's an R 10 grouping, those are all the lots that are noncompliant with either the underlying zone or what it would have been for a two-family. And if you go to the next slide, there you go. This is the R 20. So again, it's the same thing, that it's lots that are less than 10,000, lots that are less than 20, and then lots that are less than 30. If you go one more, there you go. This is everything. These are all of the lots of those 8,700 lots, Mr. Chairman, that you're referring to.
So, you know, we didn't dwell on the site specifics because there were more crucial issues here. And we're charged with the health, safety, and well-being of the entire community, not just a small sect. So if you can go to the next slide. R 10 and R 20 is dominated by three-bedroom, one to two bathrooms. There are two bedrooms, there are four bedrooms, but it's primarily three bedrooms, raised ranch, ranch, capes. All right. So the rent structure, because that's really what this is motivated towards, the rent structure, based on conversations I've had with students in every parking lot, every store I could find, and going through my neighbor, including the students who live on either side of me. Average rent right now is $1,000 a bedroom. A month. So it's $3,000 per month. I looked at it eight-month school year, and you're talking $24,000 for the school year. I talked to some friends of mine who are landlords, and they were very open about things, and they said, "If you could get half the rent for the whole summer, that's probably good." So at $1,500 a week, you're talking $15,000. So you're talking $39,000 a year on a three-bedroom ranch. But you understand that all the other things that the town council is implementing really pushes towards five bedrooms. So what happens? So we now have duplexes. All right? So you have a three-bedroom ranch. And what I'm getting at is what we looked at, which is the most crucial thing to the community as a whole, is sewer and water. So now, if you have a three-bedroom duplex, where you had three bedrooms on that same property, you now have six bedrooms. And you might say, "Well, why would anybody do that?" Well, $1,000 a bedroom, that's $6,000 a month. That's $48,000 a year for school, and that's $30,000 in the summer. And you're talking $78,000 per year of income. And I'm not negative on this. I mean, I got to be honest with you. If this stuff passes, I'm going to get back into developing. Not kidding. Four-bedroom deluxe is eight bedrooms. And if you look at the size of a bedroom based on the state regs, it's not that big. So now you're talking $8,000 a month, same property that originally gave you $3,000 a month. $64,000 a school year, $40,000 in the summer, $104,000 per year. All right? Next, five-bedroom. You go from $3,000 a month to $10,000 a month. You go $80,000 a school year, $50,000 a summer, and now you're at $130,000. Investment probably, and I've asked builder friends of mine, and I've asked a couple former clients who are looking at this and coming into Narragansett, they said, "Top end for a knockdown rebuild, $3 million." They said it's profitable from day one. So three-bedroom duplex, $78,000, four-bedroom, $104,000, and five-bedrooms, $130, or five bedroom duplex. So why is this important? Because you have to understand the demand before you understand the impact. It's critical. These numbers are not numbers I made up. There's numbers I investigated, but they were also numbers done by two former clients who are looking to come into this market, and this is what they're projecting their incomes at. We can go to the next one? So, infrastructure impact. So looking at the plant, and I have a qualification on this, and I've been screaming this from day one, the capacity of the plant, URI owns 33% of our plant, and they are at 34% of their capacity. They're looking also to add an additional 1,000-plus beds in the next couple of years. Narragansett owns 24% of the plant. We are at 100% of our capacity. Existing, we're at 100%, right? We rent additional capacity from URI. And then South Kingston is at 42% ownership. They are 53% capacity, right? And the treatment plant is at 50% capacity. And this is dangerous when you start thinking this way. Okay? Project impact. 86, I put 8,600, I took 100 out, figuring, you know, you've got wetlands, just kind of tempering it a little bit for unbuildable lots. If you just look at 1% of the 8,600 being built, you've got 86 lots. And I looked at, so not trying to make this, oh, my God, honey penny, I looked at the sober four bedrooms. It's more than the three, less than the five. At four-bedroom duplexes, you end up with five additional bedrooms per lot, because you have to take out the original three-bedroom house. That's a total of 430 additional bedrooms. Can we go to the next one? 430 additional bedrooms. And I met with the town engineer. There is a standard by which DEM has 140 gallons per bedroom, but in speaking to our engineer, who's available and will speak later, he recommended using the septic. He thought with all the saving devices in today, it's much more about 115 gallons per bedroom per day. And that's 49,000 gallons per day for the new, that's over and above what we already have. This is 1% growth. That is $18,490,0250 gallons per year, above our 100% going into the plant. And people will argue, "Well, the plant's only at 50%." Okay? All right? This doesn't include water, and inflow and infiltration is a nightmare for any engineer, such as stormwater and groundwater entering sewage systems. And this is usually what happens on older systems. And our system is 40-plus years old. This is especially in the pier. This is what the inside of a 40-year-old sewer pipe looks like. And this is what I've been screaming about. The plant's at 50%. You have to get the material to the plant. And you don't have to hold a doctorate in engineering to understand that water seeks the path of least resistance. If it can't go forward, it's going backwards. I also looked at water, all right? And this is, all went into our decision. We put together the analysis. 86 back to the same qualifiers, I kept it consistent, 8,600 qualified lots, 1% developed, 86, four-bedroom duplex, five additional bedrooms per lot, a total of 430 additional bedrooms. All right? Using state standards, 430 additional bedrooms, it's an average of 3,000 gallons per person per month. That is 1,290,000 gallons per month. That's 15,480,000 gallons per year. Now, this is, the assumption here is that there's only one person per bedroom. But understand, the town council's definition is no less than one person per bedroom, with a maximum of five. So you could have two people to one bedroom and then have three and still be at five. I just used one person per bedroom. Now, the problem here is, you can clean out sewer lines. It's going to cost a lot of money. You can upgrade your sewer plant. You can expand your sewer plant for the growth. You can't invent water. And we are already crippled by water during the summers. We're having difficult times dealing with our water shortages and stuff. And now you're going to add 15 million gallons on top of that? This was just reckless to approve this. And this is why there's an enabling act. And we hear from the town council that you have to go by the letter of the state law. As I said in my last meeting, a person in the Attorney General's office said, "Anybody who tells you that does not know what they're talking about." We had two lawyers review our proposal to the last town council. And what we did was, we looked at making incentive for duplexes, and we put in an affordable component in it. And we moved it to R 40 and R 80. Bigger lots, less impact on the lot size, the density is less sensitive. It kept with the intent of the law, it didn't weaken the law, and it protected the health, safety, and well-being and the financial stability of this community by taking the stress off of our most sensitive neighborhoods. And that's what we went forward with. This is what we presented. We didn't just come up with an idea of, "Hey, let's do this." We don't do that. It's not what we do. And this is the analysis that went into it. This is why we chose the path we did. We explained it to the town council, they understood it, and they voted for it. And so that's how we got to here. Thank you, gentlemen. Doc?
How do you follow that, right? But I was, I'm going to say it in one or two sentences, when they proposed this, that, you know, you have to look at the effects on the town facilities, the water, the sewage. And, you know, you spelled it out beautifully, not only, you know, with the slides that you described, but just, you know, walking through it, that what we have before the present town council decided to change it was obviously well-thought-out, and that's why we had it. So the idea of this, like overload approach is beyond me. Obviously, there's, you said it nicely, that I'm beyond going back into a profit-making mode, but I think you, you know, you said it well. There's profit to be made here. In any case, enough sarcasm.
I think, looking at the, at the record in front of us from when we sent these changes to the council, I think, I think there's solid information on there about consistency with comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. If you look at the comprehensive plan, there's strong language in there about needing year-round housing and affordable housing, and, and housing for families. And until the state law changes, we had duplexes in every zone, but they were, they were managed by density, by lot size of the properties. And with 40% of the, 50% of the lots in our 10, not meeting the standards for an R10 lot, so we've, as most people know, we have many, many lots in town that are 5,000 square feet, so, so I think the, allowing duplexes by right in, in all those lots is, is problematic for the character of the community and for, for the impacts, as Mark showed, on the, on the stormwater infrastructure. And I know, when we looked at this before, we, we talked about, can, can we have a requirement that prohibits the use of these duplex properties for short-term rentals or requiring a year-round lease? And, and legal advised us that we weren't able to do that. So I think that's, I don't know if that's your, your feeling, but that was sort of the advice we got when we looked at this a year ago.
You're correct.
I think if we were able to do that, then we'd know they'd be for year-round families. I don't, I think it would stem the speculation for the rental industry, and I think that would, that'd make a difference. And then I have some questions for, for Jonathan when you're ready for that.
Tom?
I have some questions for Jonathan when you're ready as well.
Okay. Steve?
Okay, I've got some questions. I'd like to start with some well-produced slides. I see the terrifying red number at the bottom, I like it. Can we be provided with these slides before the meeting, so I could look in? I mean, I'm sure they're true, but you, there's no context. I don't know how much water we use now, I don't know how much water a normal house uses, you just gave me horrifying numbers. But that's neither here nor there. We're here to talk about the, the changes to the zoning proposed by the town council, which will increase duplexes on lots in Narragansett. According to our comprehensive plan, again, we want more affordable housing. I know that affordable has a legal representation from the state, we need to reach 10% affordable. This, you're right, will not move that forward, because that is subsidized and rent-controlled affordable housing. It will, however, increase the stock of affordable housing as less expensive housing. Because duplexes, if you've looked around in town, one unit is not equal to the same price as a single-family home. It is less. Your bedroom calculation, your rents, they're all off. The rents per bedroom are not the same in a duplex as they are in a single-family house. The increase of 430 additional bedrooms would, if they are rented to students, which I don't think there's a lot of evidence for that, would in fact lower the amount of rent per bedroom across the board by increasing supply. That's all good things. But another thing about duplexes, if you've looked around town, as I have, and I've lived here, they're mostly year-round. There are a lot of owner-occupied rentals. There are a lot of rentals to year-round families, families that my children go to school with, families that I went to school with when I was in school here. So I think duplexes are a good thing. I understand that they're not everybody's cup of tea, all right? I don't love them either. But if we're trying to make housing in Narragansett more affordable, more accessible, then they're a good thing. And, you know, fear-mongering about our infrastructure, I agree, the infrastructure needs updating. We can buy more water, we can hold more water, we can build desalination plants, we can expand our sewer plants, we can rotor the pipes. You're absolutely right, we can do all that, and we should, as a government, use tax dollars to improve our infrastructure. So, I've got a lot of other stuff here, but that, that threw me for a loop, because I, I hadn't seen that before, and, you know, it's a great argument, but in a vacuum, I can't assess its value. So, I, I just think your economics are not quite right, although, you know, you got numbers up there, so they look good. And that's all I got on this one.
So these were available for the public a year ago. We presented these a year ago.
Okay.
So they've been out there.
Are they in our binder?
Excuse me?
Are they in our binder?
No.
Did we get them before this meeting?
No, but they were in public.
Okay.
And the numbers have been researched, the numbers are based on actual conversations with the engineering department, actual conversations with people, so stand by the numbers. And again, I, I'm not putting these numbers to shame investors and landlords, just the opposite. The numbers were framed, I have the floor.
I apologize.
The numbers were there to show you that there is a demand for this. There is a demand based on the revenue that they generate. This is a different market than Providence, it's a different market than Cranston, it's a different market than Newport. Highest and best use for a property is not a single-family home. I would argue, highest and best use is not even industrial or commercial, it is a rental. And I worked for developers for 45 years, I'm a capitalist pure and pure. But the discussion of, of, if you want to discuss numbers, to expand the plant, to flush out and clean out sewer lines, to install desalinization plants, I want to know how much money that is. John, I hope you got those numbers. And I want to know where we're gonna get those numbers, because in the end, you still are going to have demand. And it's gonna exceed our capacity. So, you, you can throw stones at the numbers all you want, the fact of the matter is, it's a real issue. And this is an issue we addressed. To just implement a policy because you can, and not take into account the consequences of that? I mean, one, you either didn't care, or two, you did it without thinking. I don't know which was worse.
John, you wanna come up? You can go home now if you want. Yeah, it's, make sure the red button on, if you can introduce yourself and let everybody know.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Gerhardt, I'm the town engineer, and I was invited tonight to try and respond to any of your questions. I don't know that I'll have dollar figures for any of the expansion amounts, but I can try and answer any questions you may have.
Do you have anything you want to add to the conversation?
Just one item that you had commented on the plant, the regional plant is at about 60, 61% of its capacity, based on last year's flow, not 50. Our town plant in Scarborough, which handles the south end of town, is at, is at about 50%, based on last year's numbers. But otherwise, everything, yeah, it's, that's gonna be the limiting factor to all this stuff. If you could build everything you want, and you could max out the density up there, but if you can't get the water to the house and get the wastewater away, that's gonna be the big problem. And we are, we are against the wall at the regional facility. The south end of town, we've got more flexibility down there, we've got a little more capacity available at that plant. And that's, that's why the sewer policy has, has the, a little more, less restrictive in the southern end of town. And again, I mentioned the sewer policy, we do have, in addition to the ordinances, the sewer policy is in place, it was established originally in 1995, and has gone through some iterations and, and modifications since then. But essentially, it, it's a document to restrict and limit and be able to control development and expansion of the sewer system. And a lot of the, a lot of the limitations are, are in place to encourage or to save space for failed septic systems and the like, because we do have areas of town, I know some of the areas you pointed to, Embonnet there, a lot of, you know, the southern third of, of the peninsula there is still on septic, but they're all getting ready to fail, and, and that's an area where we're gonna need to expand to. One other thing I'd like to add, too, is that in terms of the planning, we are in the process of putting together a new wastewater facilities plan, which is a 20-year planning document for all the town wastewater facilities, and that is scheduled to be completed in September. We don't have the final draft ready, but that'll be going to public comment and presentation, and it'll be presented before, at town meetings as well. So that's, that document should work to establish what the goals are for what exists as zoning, and we do have a component to try and evaluate some of these changes that have come down from the legislation. It has not, we have not presented any of these proposed ordinance changes, because they don't exist yet completely, but they have been proposed, but it's just another factor that'll have to get added into that. But, yeah, it's, it would be a stress to double or triple the amount of flow from, you know, a bunch of lots in town. And that, and, and again, with, from the wastewater side, we just don't have any room for any of it, and particularly in the north end.
John, Steve brought up a good point on budgets to, you know, repair and clean out sewer lines or replace sewer lines and plant, how many, what are we talking about, dollar figure? And I'm not gonna hold you to this, but ballpark?
I'm, I'm not sure, sewer line construction could probably be, you know, $250 a foot, maybe even, actually could be more than that, probably because of the depth and the like. You know, water, water lines, you know, current estimates are about $300 a linear foot for new water lines. We wouldn't necessarily need new water, you could possibly maintain, meet the demand with the existing infrastructure, although it's the supply, the supply side that is the difficulty.
So the infrastructure will carry it, but the supply?
But, but the water supply itself, and, but, and to that, it's, the water supplies are designed for, and generally sized based on population estimates and projections and the like, but they're designed for consumptive use and sanitary use, they're not designed for, for irrigation use and landscaping use. So that's generally, we, we can, we are close, and it is problematic when we have droughts in the town, if, if you're not aware of the town, we don't produce any water, we buy it all from either North Kingstown or Violia. Violia has their wells over in S.K. and, and North Kingstown, obviously in North Kingstown. But we don't produce the water. So whenever we have, you know, a drought or, or a shortage issue, it's because they're having difficulty in their wells, and, and they can't, you know, they've got customer supply of their own. But if, generally, if people would comply with the, whether it be an odd even to start, or whether it's just a complete ban and not watery lawns, you know, we'd be able to get by much more, much more readily with, within those periods of low water.
Even with all that additional growth?
The additional growth, you know, would impact it as well. I don't, I don't know what, exactly what the water supply system plans have been based on, but generally, those 20-year planning documents are put together based on existing zoning and build-out projections and population projections, or a combination thereof.
Okay. My last question. North Kingstown and South Kingstown are also facing the same demand? So, any chance that they pull back on the supply, or just hold it steady on the supply?
Our, our, we don't have a formal agreement in place with North Kingstown, we're just a customer, so, but if, if they, if they come to the point where they can't meet their demands, they would look to restrict to our, to our supply. The Violia agreement goes back to, I think, the 60s, '72 or '65, somewhere in there. I know the wastewater agreements with, with URI are '70, '71, '72. I think the, the original agreement with Wakefield Water Company was in the 60s. That has a limitation on the amount that we can withdraw from them. It's not necessarily realistic, and, and we kind of comply with it, but I'd have to go, I'd have to look at the numbers, but generally, it's, it's, they don't have, we don't have trouble unless there's a drought with the current development.
With the current development. Thank you.
Yes, John, you mentioned X dollars are running foot for water or replacement or sewer replacement, but, but how many millions of dollars are we talking here? If we had to do what we, what we may eventually have to do if we get overbuilt?
It's the, I'm not sure the exact numbers for treatment facility expansions at this point in time, and we would have to do a significant, you know, volume, you know, you can't do just, oh, we just add, you know, half a million or a couple hundred thousand here, there, it'd be, you know, half a million gallons or another million gallons worth of, of flow. Probably, I mean, that type of, of expansion at the regional treatment plant now would probably be in the order of at least $10 million, possibly 20. I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to research the figures to see what those, those numbers are, I don't know what the current construction costs are. But I know we have some current estimates on just wastewater pumping stations that are in the range of, you know, three, two and $3 million to just replace one of our 19 wastewater pump stations that, that just take flow to the treatment facility. Everything is more expensive now, and, and all the equipment and maintenance is there. And, but that's, we'll have some better estimates when the facilities plan comes forward, too. But you're talking about multimillion-dollar projects, especially for a facilities expansion. It'd probably be a quarter million dollars just to get the design and planning documents done for a facility expansion of, at the regional plant.
So that's, that's the sewer in. If North Kingstown says, guys, we're low on water, you're, you're on your own, the suggestion was we could, you know, put a, put a hose into the, into the ocean. What, have you looked into that? It's gotta be expensive to, to desalinate.
It's, if it was cheap, we'd be doing it already, I'm sure. But I know, you know, we have some plants in the area of, of Palmer River and, in Massachusetts that, that do do it. I don't know what their operating cost, and those are probably 10 or 15 years old now, if I'm not mistaken, maybe about that. But I would think, you know, from that standpoint, that would be, you know, if, if that becomes a solution, it should be looked at as a regional solution to, to supplement, you know, with North Kingstown and, and Violia's supply there, and, and whether we would provide it to other inland areas or the like. But those, those are expensive plants. I want, I, my recollection is, is 15 or 20 million dollars on those projects 10 or 15 years ago for, and I'm not sure what they're getting out of, I'm not sure if they're getting, you know, a million or two million gallons a day, because it wouldn't make sense to build a plant unless you're gonna produce a, a large volume of water.
Just, again, depending on who's in charge up in North Kingstown, they may or may not be cooperative in the future, that's, that's why I asked the question that way.
If we keep paying our customer rates, they're not gonna mind, I don't think, so that's, that's what we have, we, you know, we keep paying our bills, they'll keep giving us water as long as they don't run out.
I remember we wanted to, was a fire hydrant, the connection up at the north end there, going up 1A, we wanted to...
Yes.
Hook in, come down?
There was an applicant looking to hook in, yes.
The answer was no. So cooperation is, is okay as long as everybody's cooperative, you know? That's the only point I'm bringing up.
John, I'm, I'm curious, so the existing sewer and water design, the lines, we have a lot of one- and two-bedroom cottages on 5,000-square-foot lots. Was it designed for one- or bedroom cottages, or was it designed with the expectation they'd be replaced?
Generally, you know, the water designer, it'll, it'll come up with, with whatever the demand might be, there'd be a demand projection, and they'll, they'll size a water main for that. But generally, in our current, current design, I forget if we have a six or eight inch, generally, you're not gonna see anything smaller than an eight-inch line to feed anything these days. We have two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, they're around town, because it was put in over time and older, some of the, you know, smaller, like if you get into a small, specific neighborhood and it's just looped, you know, say Breakwater Village, I think they may run a, like a two-inch HDP line around there, or, but, but they could just, if there's hydrants down there, you have to have a larger line to feed it. Some, sometimes that's what the sizing will be based upon for fire, there'll be a fire flow demand, it's like, okay, we got a residential, we need a hydrant here, we gotta get 1,000 gallons a minute for four, for, out of this hydrant. So you'll base it off of whatever your supply, you'll assume, from, from a design standpoint, you'll assume an infinite supply, like you won't run out of water, but, and, and it'll always be, at least at this pressure, but, you know, how big a pipe do we need to get it down there to be able to, and, and it has to be at a, you know, it's gotta be at a minimum 20 PSI coming out of the hydrant, else the firefighters can't use it. So it's generally a fire... It's generally a fire, fire flow demand is what it's, what it's based on to size the, to size the, the infrastructure from, from the water standpoint. And in the wastewater, it'll be based on, on, you know, whatever your, your design flow from the, from the estimated from the houses. Like, like Mark said here, the chairman said, the, the WOTS, the way the, the septic, on site wastewater rags call for 115 gallons a day per bedroom. DEM's other wastewater guidance, you know, when, if you're just going in off the street to say, okay, we're designing an entire system, they use 300 gallons a day per each residence because some will have more, some will have less, some bedrooms. But those are the numbers, and if you're going to use something different, you have to justify it to them with data. So you could take your, you know, your treatment plant flow and your population and say, well, we use 280 gallons a day, and that's what we'll design to. So depending on what the population is, if it was designed for, if, if the sewer systems were designed up there when they were built in the 90s, if they were built based on the individual smaller lots, it can probably handle it. If they weren't, it might not. Well, I would have a better idea from, from our, our updated facilities plan. The last facilities plan that was done 20 years ago said that we had sufficient capacity in all the lines as available. Generally, on a single street, your smallest size sewer line is going to be eight inches, and that's going to be able to handle, you know, everybody on the street and then some because, you know, they'd be just put in six-inch sewers and smaller, and it would still work. The eight inches the smallest, just from a practical standpoint, because they want to have enough capacity, you know, and, and sewers are generally designed, designed to run half-full, so you could overload them a little bit. But, you know, the evaluation of our wastewater infrastructure, if these changes go through, will, will need to be addressed in terms of where, specifically where the development is going to occur, to confirm the capacity exists in those, in those lines, and, and again, if, if they need to be upgraded as part of these, as part of an approval process on a new, a new duplex or several.
I think, I think that was a key question I had. Do you have, do you have any sense of, do we have another one? How many connections do you have that are only seasonal draws on your water and on your sewer?
It's, it seems to be less and less. I mean, we have, I could, I can probably check the numbers around. We have a number of turnoffs. That's, that's how I would tell from our water turn-on, turnoffs. But we're only a portion of it. We, you know, Veolia services the middle section of town in this area here, and they have a lot of the older infrastructure here, and a lot of the turn-on, turnoffs end up being more down in the southern end, I think, where they are truly beach houses, you know, but, you know, and probably, like, all of Breakpoint, or Breakwater Village, all of that, all those things that are really seasonal units. That's, that's where a lot of our, our, the true seasonal ones are. But again, you get down to Scarborough and those more residential areas, and they're, you know, they're, there's college students in those places, you know? You can kind of, you can kind of tell as you go by, and you say, you know, Bonnet, I know, it used to be Bonnet was, was seasonal and smaller, and now, I know I got friends that kids live up there who are going to graduate in a month, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Jonathan. I'm curious, I'm trying to get kind of a big-picture understanding of something. The regional plant on West Moreland is on Narragansett land, but owned by South Kingston. South Kingston manages it on behalf of the Three Partners. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And is it also correct that 100% of the waste that is generated at the University of Rhode Island's campus in Kingston is, goes to that, goes to that plant?
I believe that is the case. I don't know if they have any other smaller facilities or septic down there. I don't know, I'm not, I don't have details on their infrastructure on campus, but I believe everything that they have down there and any of the new construction has all been connected to the sewers. And they, they were, whether it was, I think that S.K. really has most of their, the wastewater. I don't know that URI has too much in the way of pumping facilities. Primarily gets over to one main pump station and then comes up. And I know South Kingston has just upgraded those facilities, which, you know, as, as being the partner that doesn't utilize those, we didn't have to pay for that portion, but all the other stuff at the plant, we do pay for.
Okay. And Narragansett is the host community for the Bay Campus. Is the Bay, is 100% of the Bay Campus' waste traveled to the West Moreland plant?
As far as, yes, the Bay Campus is, and they are, they're handled as a sewer customer for, for the town.
Okay. So, and did I understand, Mark, and maybe in your presentation, that URI's percentage here is 40, what, 40-some odd percent?
They're, they own 33% of the plant. We own about 24, and, and URI, or S.K. owns 45 or thereabouts.
Okay. And for some number of years, the university has had ample capacity to handle their waste and have enough left over to lease to Narragansett some of its capacity. Is that correct?
Yes. We've been leasing, I believe, since the mid-'90s or thereabouts.
Okay. If, you know, in a prior life, I, I worked at the University of Connecticut, and for about five years had oversight for their water and sewer operations at an executive leadership level. So I don't understand the engineering behind it, but I understand some of the policy and the planning issues behind it. Can you tell me, there's the issue of capacity, but what's the average daily flow at West Moreland and, and Scarborough?
Yeah, I have those numbers here. The, the average daily for the last fiscal year, which was, ended June 30th of 2004, our average flow to the West Moreland plant was 1.36 MGD. South Kingston was 1.138, and URI was 0.56, 0.57. So of those numbers, that represents 44% of the flow that goes to the plant. 45% of the plant came from Narragansett. 37% of the flow to the plant, this is just based on the total volume of flow that was sent there, was from South Kingston, and 18 was from URI. I think I have other numbers. I think that the one slide, yeah, this slide here has the capacities. Yeah, so the, the numbers, the flow numbers I just gave you, that, the bottom line, there's 53% capacity is, is, is this number. South Kingston sent 1.138 on a daily basis average last year, and so that's 53% of their, of their own capacity, the 2.12 MGD.
It reminded me, is it a 5-million gallon plant?
It's a 5-million gallon.
5-million gallon plant, right? And, but we both know that average daily flow doesn't really, is not really a meaningful number, because you've got to understand peak.
It's the design flow and the peak flow.
Yeah, so, so the peak, could you tell me, what is the peak flow to the plant, to the regional plant in the months of, let's say, when students are not here? Let's say in the months of May and January versus October and April?
I'd, I'd have to look at those figures to see. We do have flow on a monthly basis. I could check and see.
Would you, substantial, substantial changes over the?
I don't think there is much as you would, you would expect. I, I, well, actually, they, they do drop, but I want to say it's, it's maybe two months out of the year.
Right.
Where they drop, or you'll see a drop in, in December to January. I don't think I have the, I don't have the.
Yeah, I just, you know, what I'm trying.
I could, I could look at last year's number and get.
Yeah, what I'm trying to establish is, is, I would imagine there are two months when there are relatively lower flows, and those will probably be Jan, the kind of December-January period and the period of May. And then the seasonal stuff will pick up, and you're kind of right back where you are.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what occurs is the, the overall plant is going to run around the same, but, but URI is going to have a drop-off in the summer and.
Right.
And, and, you know, a little bit in the seasonal, in the break periods.
Okay. The, is, is the existing five-year, 20-year plan for the, for the sewer, for the sewer system, is that the one that was done by Jeremy and Associates?
Oh, yeah, it was done in 2006, and there'd been some minor updates along the way, but nothing substantial has changed in that.
Okay. And, and then just, just to circle back one last time. The reason I'm asking about the kind of the peaking questions is it gives us kind of a data point in terms of if we're, you know, you hear the number 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 students living in Narragansett. I'm not sure which one of those numbers is the right numbers, but it gives you a sense for the irony in my judgment, and, and again, this is a little off-topic, but not. The irony in, in the subject is that Narragansett has to lease from the University of Rhode Island space that it has in order to provide housing for students in the town of Narragansett for the months of, it's kind of an ironic situ, I'm not sure what the economic terms of that lease agreement are. I'd be interested in knowing what they are at the appropriate moment, but it's an interesting question when you kind of think about it. Thank you.
Steve?
Thanks, Mark. Sorry, I, I just did some quick math, so I think I got my head around it now. I apologize for going off. I like numbers and statistics, but I got confused when we're throwing percentages and gallons per day and then gallons per year, so I, I think I've got my head around it.
Two sets of percentages on that slide right there. They go with different numbers, so that's why, that's why.
I know, and I didn't write them down at the beginning. I didn't know we were going to switch the, so, but anyway, I think I've got my head around it fairly well. Based on the example of adding, you know, X number of beds is 1% of the increase, and you, you came up with like 18 million gallons per year for the sewer, which seems to be about a 5% increase to our capacity. Now, is a 5% increase going to crushingly overburden the sewer? Like, what will that do?
More than likely, it would trigger a, in a, in a high-flow event when we, it could trigger the need for hydraulic assessment and capacity. The, the, all the wastewater facilities are permitted for a certain flow. The 5 million gallons is a permitted capacity. It may be hydraulically designed for seven and a half to handle some peak flows and the like. I know the meter pegs at 10 MGD because that happened last May over there. And then the Scarborough plant is permitted for 1.4. But if we, if we, if the discharge permits, EPA and, and our IDM discharge permits require a, a capacity evaluation to be conducted if you have 90 consecutive days at over 80% of your permitted capacity. So we have not had that yet at the regional plant. We've been running at 65% typically, but last year, we were above 75 for one month, and we were, and that, that was, we had the wet May, wet March, and then that real heavy May, that real heavy rain in May, and that's what leads to, and that's, that's the problem, the other problem we have in particular at, at West Moreland is, is the sewers, they're not so much leaky, but some pumps and other people that have connections that we try to address and get out of there, but they don't. It's, it's not, it's not easily done because unlike commercial businesses and, and industrial customers, we don't have the right to walk in, knock on your door and say, we are going to come in and inspect your sewer system, because the commercial industrial people don't vote for the town council. And the town council passes the ordinance for that, but the capacities are, are, you know, if we, we would, if we added 5%, like right now, we're running at 100% of our own capacity, which is, you know, at least we can point to that, even, and even last year. Like that one point, you know, last year, we were at 1.1.363, and the last time I checked, 1.363 is more than 100% of 1.2197. So over the year, we were, we actually needed to use the lease capacity. The lease capacity is just kind of a buffer, and it's, it's mostly, it's really just to account for the fact that we do go over and we, and we are using more capacity than we have there. It's not like, you know, it's, and, and that's the idea of the capacity lease, and, and the capacities are based on the original capital construction costs of the, of the original plant and the first expansion. So it's all money that was spent in the past, and, you know, it's like, if we don't use it, nobody else will, but, you know, the plant, but the plant will need to be expanded if we go more than 80% of 5 MGD for three months. And, and that's where we're at, so.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're close. 5% would get us there for one month last year and maybe more months in the future.
Yeah, well, 5, like I said, 5% would put us, we would probably run over 100%, you know, continuously.
Yeah.
At, of our, of our capacity. And if URI, I know URI, they're talking about building things down there and saying, well, we might need our capacity. Fortunately, they are running, you know, they're running at, at low in, in what their capacity is, because they've already said in, in, in some of the documentation and the, the agreements that they, you know, they don't really have any interest in doing any more expansion or any more capacity at the plant because they probably have enough, they have enough to handle the 1,000 beds and do other expansions over there. So I don't think, they're, they're not an issue. You know, it'd be nice to be able to, you know, go back in time and say, well, let's just switch these numbers a little so the Narragansett has 35% and URI only has 25, and that would, everybody would be happy right now, except for the plant would be, you know, we'd still all be seeing it getting close to capacity, but we'd all be sharing, sharing the pain a little more.
All right. Well, it sounds like you got your work cut out for you to re-up this 20-year plan, and I'd advise you to take this into account. You know, you might get 5 or 10 more percent, and.
Yeah, I think.
You know, we got to do what we got to do to.
To accommodate, you know, and I was discussing here, and as I discussed with Mark yesterday, to, you know, really, you know, to accommodate all this, that, that plant needs to be, the capacity needs to be expanded.
Yeah.
You know, and part of that is to try and address, you know, you know, extraneous flows and tighten up our pipes and make sure everything's running properly. But, you know, it's, and, and it's not something, it's not a new problem for Narragansett. Like I said, we've been renting space for 20 years. Low-flow fixtures helped us out for, you know, and dropped that number down from 400,000 gallons a day to 200,000 gallons a day, but now we could probably use 400,000 gallons a day, you know?
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, just one more question. There were, I think there were three areas of the town that are currently unsued that were identified as priorities in the existing 20-year plan. It would include the area of, I don't know if it was Great Island or the other island over there, and then there was the area of Baltimore, Rhode Island, and Baltimore, Rhode Island in Pennsylvania, and there was one other area. As far as I know, none of those areas were sewed over the course of the last 20 years. Is that correct?
No, no.
And I presumably, they continue to be priorities for the town?
I don't know that they're prioritized, or the, the word prioritize may be that those areas of town, if we're going to sewer expansions, would be prioritized to get sewers, but they have not been prioritized to provide sewer to them. Great Island is, you know, there's no plans right now to sewer that, the same for Harbor Island, and, and then Jerusalem, same way. Jerusalem would be a tough sell on that as well. You'd have to, you know, either you get some kind of little package plant over there and try and permit a new discharge, or, you know, you're going to pump it, pump it back across the, the channel and get it back over to our side. So, but, but there's, there's no plans, you know, based on the current plan. Those, those were, you know, they're slated, you know, build out the whole town, get sewers, essentially is what it comes down to, except for a couple of select areas. I think the North Passage, extreme north on the NK lineup on the, on the coastline. But otherwise, you know, from a build-out perspective, I believe that every place is supposed to get sewers, but, you know, the septic conditions on Harbor Island and Great Island have not been such that it, it's a problem like, like they had in Briggs, you know, 20 years ago.
Rupert? Doc?
You want me to tell bad stories?
No, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Steve, any other follow-up questions?
Just one quick thing about those neighborhoods, Harbor Island and Great Island. It was my understanding that there's some CRMC regulation that we can't expand the sewer west of 108. Is that accurate?
I, I, I'm not familiar with that. I believe, you know, any, any expansion in, in that area would have to, would have to go through a CRMC approval, but I think, you know, and, and it would, it would impact the plant. That probably what's, what's been part of the reason why it hasn't been there. But if, it depends if they're in a special area management plan, and I know, like, the Nara River has their special area management plan, but the Cove has other issues, but yeah, CRMC probably would need to be involved there.
Yeah, that's my understanding, because we actually tried to extend the sewer west of 108, and they didn't approve it.
Well, it, it depends, it depends where, if, like, down there, what, what's, what's the?
I'm right between Harbor Island and Great Island.
Yeah, I know.
Right in that area.
I'm trying to think, it's, it's down, and, and there is some, there were some down there, but I, and I recall, you know, if it's to, like, a single lot and a single component, or like a whole new subdivision.
Yeah, it was an existing subdivision, but a whole neighborhood, and it was going to service some new.
Yeah, it's, that's. Yeah, it's... And again, anything that has to do with anything in Narragansett almost is going to have to have a CRMC approval wrapped around it.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. And at $200 to $300 a linear foot for sewer and water upgrades, I'm presuming that this isn't money that the town can put up. We're looking for state and federal funding to do something like this?
It would... Yeah, it would be... We'd have to find some more money definitely on the sewer side. And again, we've got an old and aging system that is in need of repair, and we're going to have to be spending money on that soon, which we're going to have to come up with as well. So, you know, these type of expansions, you know, and if the reason for us to expand our facilities is to do with development, you know, whether we can come up with some development fees or impact fees or anything like that, that would be a way to look at it, too. Right now, both the water and wastewater side are fully funded enterprise funds, which means it's not tax dollars, even though it comes from... You pay at the tax collection office, you pay your water bill to there and your sewer bill. But they are user fees and paid through the user fees for both funds.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the cost for linear foot and thinking about miles of pipe, and the conversion doesn't work to user fees.
Yeah, the water lines... Generally, the water lines, what's existing, could need to be replaced, but that may be an aging issue. In fact, if we need to... And if anything is undersized, we would put in a larger pipe now. Some of them... Some of the lines would end up being larger just by default, or it's a different size, you know? They don't make certain sizes of pipe anymore. Like, we got a lot of 10-inch, we got a lot of 10-inch, you know, asbestos cement concrete. It's like, you can't buy 10-inch pipe now. It's going to be a 12-inch pipe. Can't buy a 16-inch pipe, 18. Everything is, you know, half-foot or hard-foot. So those things will be... That's part of the nature of rebuilding it. And then the sewer lines, you know, a lot of the existing, you know, like, again, a lot of those systems up in the north end, they should be suitable for another continued use. The pipelines should be designed for 100-year, at least 50-year, but they were put in in the 90s, so we should have life expectancy left in those. Some of the older sewers in the center of town here, those areas get a little older. But some of the materials, like the north end, I think, has a lot of PVC pipe. Down here, we have some asbestos cement sewer line, but we have some vitrified clay, the, you know, the shorter pipes, the more fragile materials, more prone to leaking, and more in need of being replaced sooner.
So just even cleaning them and lining them is expensive, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Cheaper than digging it up and putting a new one in now.
I was on a town council, and we got a surprise where there's some failures in the downtown, and they discovered that the downtown was entirely wood piping. So that was a serious dollar, and that was probably 20 years ago. So I'm just looking at this and saying, "There's no way out of user fees or even the tax structure of this town that you can really foot this bill." So Steph, do you have any questions?
Yeah, we talk during the day.
Thank you, John. Anything you want to add?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to talk because I agree with you all that this, you know, the issue of utilities and infrastructure needs to be part of this conversation. And I... And it... We just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we know what's, you know, as any approvals that come, we know what the impacts are going to be.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Board, you okay? You guys all set? I'm going to open it up to public. All right? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll open it up to the public. Ladies before gentlemen, sorry. My mother is Maria Josepina Antoinette Sisiolo, so it's going this way. Please do me a favor, introduce yourself, your address.
Good evening, Gail Skoprop, Luton, New York. I'm really happy to hear the level of analysis that has gone into the previous work of the town council's report and the process made. Do I have a...
Off on me. Sorry. Yeah, thank you for the impressive research that you guys always do before you provide your recommendations to the town council. It's much appreciated. It would seem that if the town engineering department is preparing a 20-year plan for wastewater management, that one of the recommendations might be to hold off on any of these zoning changes until that plan is made public. Also, I think in terms of thinking about building and development, as I'm a climate change scientist, that's what I've done for 40 years, climate modeling and climate reconstruction. And we can't avoid the fact that this area is going to have more extreme drought events in the summer. That's going to impact greatly our water supply issues. And we also can't avoid increased storm surge events, increased flooding events that are going to impact our water supply and our stormwater issues. And so we can't think about zoning issues without separate and separate all of what we know is coming down the pike. That has to be part of the equation. And Mr. DeSimone mentioned the potential for a desalinization plant to meet our water shortage issues. A desalinization plant costs between $300 million and $1 billion to build. And then there are very expensive operational costs. They have very high energy needs. There are a few of them in the U.S., mostly in very wealthy cities such as Carlsbad, California, which has a population of 120,000 or so. But I believe some of their water goes into the rest of San Diego County. But that is not something that the town of... Little town of Narragansett can entertain. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Again, if you could state your name and where you live, we appreciate it.
Ron Catanzaro, so I know exactly where you're coming from if you hear my last name with the Italian moms. 17 Atlantic Ave. I also volunteer on our town finance committee, and we had a meeting Monday night. And I just want to remind everyone that the wastewater enterprise fund that John was speaking of went into the black for the first time this year. Last year, the previous council, if you recall, we had to do a big study, and we had to raise rates, raise rates on water, raise rates on sewer. And the reason was that the enterprise wastewater fund, not John, but previous management of it, was a little scared to raise rates for 20 years. And so they drew the fund down, and it was going to go below zero last year until we made that rate structure change. So when you talk about the maintenance projects that John's talking about, there's not a lot of money in our wastewater enterprise fund right now. And as he mentioned, that's where the money goes... That's where the money comes from for us to do any of this infrastructure for both water and wastewater. They're separate enterprise funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Sir?
Yeah, hi. John Hanley, 10 Wilderness Drive. To add to the respect of our mothers, Idella Marcaccio, that's my mother. Couple of things, getting to the... Back to the changes that I see online that were proposed by the council. One of the things, and it's probably not too major at this time, but important to me, is I was confused by some of the changes that were made. It looks like in one of the tables of the height restrictions and stuff, they made changes in red for one of the ordinances. And then another ordinance is, I think they were changing the changes. And I know a few guys picked up on it, but it's very confusing. In fact, I have an engineering background, believe it or not, and configuration management, you just don't do that. It makes no sense to me. So I'll just leave that aside. But further on those ordinances, and please, anybody here, you is next to any of you guys, please comment if I am wrong on something. Because I base my... What I try and say on facts, and I'm not 100% correct all the time. So if anything I say is untrue, please let me know and speak up. So when I put all of these changes sorted together, I see home heights up to 40 feet in our 10A and our 20 zones. And those two things I mentioned before, there's some conflict in there, but these are not conflicted. We're completely eliminating flood area ratio limitations. We're allowing up to five students per dwelling, regardless of the number of bedrooms. We're allowing five-person unrelated households, regardless of the number of bedrooms. We're minimizing setbacks across the board. Am I good?
So far.
Okay. We're allowing currently prohibited duplex in two-family houses to be built in our 10, our 10A and our 20 zones. We're rolling back parking restrictions, and we're rolling back planning board oversight. Am I good?
So far.
So with these changes, and I am correct in stating that in these zones, you could legally have a duplex on your left, duplex on your right, duplex across the street, duplex in back of you, all 40 feet tall, reduce requirement for setbacks, each of these having 10 unrelated people or 10 students each living in. So if I got my little palace, that I like to call it, in a couple of years, I can look around, and I will be surrounded with 40 students and 40 cars, and that's my neighborhood. Am I correct?
So far, so good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? I'm not your wife, so I treat you with respect.
Harry Schofield, 9 Atlantic. It seems like this is a weekly occurrence, and it is, but I just want to compliment and thank all of you for the good job you've been doing. And again, compliment the chairman on his remarks, which are, you know, thorough and succinct, and I think everyone here agrees with. It's without going through all the numbers in as detail as you did. You know, at 50,000 feet, if you replace single-family houses with duplex, it's a no-brainer that you're going to be housing double the number of people, and therefore the water and sewer usage goes up proportionally. I just want to say that I agree with, you know, John, who just spoke, and he brought up a topic that hasn't been considered here tonight, and that is that what he's really talking about is the character of this town. You know, as someone who's lived here 50 years, I've had people tell me that, oh, the town's gutted anyway. But the town isn't gutted yet. In many respects, it's better than error. When I moved here, many of the big 18th century, 19th century houses in the pier were considered white elephants. People couldn't afford to fix them up. People couldn't heat them. But look at them today, they're multimillion-dollar palaces. And the south end has improved a lot. There's been more improvements than there have been disimprovements. But what this thing represents that you're considering tonight is a gutting of the character of the town. You know, I have been at this microphone before and mentioned that water and sewer is the most important considerations, as you articulated tonight. You agree with me. But the character's worth something, too. People like Narragansett because it has a distinct character, and as has been pointed out tonight, it's different. Every town in Rhode Island is a bit different, and Rhode Island is unique in that way. And Narragansett is unique, and we need to protect it. And so I hope you... And this has just been said, you know, by someone who's an expert, desalinization is not... It's pie in the sky for this area. We're not going to have that. And so we need to obviously improve our sewer and water situation as best we can within the budget confines we face, but we've got to manage growth. And this proposal does not manage growth. And any town council, any town council that has proposed the gutting of our ordinances the way what has been proposed to you folks on this planning board suggests, did not have the interests of the residents of this town at heart when they sent it to you. Now, there may be second guessing that. Hopefully, people are second guessing it, and I hope that your recommendations back, rejecting all of these foolish red-line proposals for all the reasons you have so articulately, you know, spoken of tonight and on other nights, rings home and that people listen. So please reject this, as you rejected the bulk zoning, you know, changes last week, for all the reasons you've stated, for the reasons John stated, Gail stated, and many of us that have been coming to this state, that it's obviously in the interests of developers and investors and not in the interest of residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Tom Warren, 26 Jake's Way. I'd like to ask the chairman's permission to submit a letter for the record.
Absolutely. It goes to our secretary?
Okay, I'll submit it to the secretary. This is a letter that's referenced. I sent it to the planning board and the town council, and I just want to make sure it's part of the record of this hearing. Thank you.
Do you want to comment on your letter? It's up to you.
Yes, summarize it, Tom.
I wrote the letter in regards to public safety in terms of building construction and building buildings too close together. And I referenced the historical significance of major fires that have happened since going back to 1666 to just in 2016 in Providence, and the dangers that exist when you build buildings that are too close together. So it's essentially a three-page letter that outlines those dangers. And then on top of that, I add two and three other characteristics that are here in Narragansett, which is a wind is one factor, overbuilding, overpopulating the buildings that we have. And these are important factors that are here in Narragansett, which compounds just basically building buildings too close together. So my letter is essentially a protest against the setbacks that are being contemplated and submitted to you by the town council.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Young lady? Sometimes I feel like The Price is Right. Come on down.
Kelly Donovan, 116 Central Street. I agree very much with the last three speakers, particularly in terms of the character of the town. I think you all have done a great job on addressing the water septic infrastructure issues. Thank you for all that. But I think we also still have to keep character of the town in center place, here, central place, because in my experience, directly here in Narragansett, once it's gone, it's gone. So if we overbuild duplexes in this case, we have eliminated the character of those neighborhoods. We're not going to get that back. We have lost a downtown in Narragansett, basically, what was a vibrant, although my mother thought kind of dumpy downtown, but it was a downtown area. And there's been... There still is a lot left that's good, as one of our speakers said, to preserve. So I would also ask that we keep focused on the character of the town and preserving what we have, which is special. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, good evening. Jill Loller, Sarasota Avenue. Mr. Friday, I wanted to thank you for bringing the town engineer here tonight to tell us what the impact of the proposal means to the town. It's vitally important. As you pointed out, it shows that this was not thought out by the town council, although I'm not the only one who's beginning to believe this isn't their plan at all. It's probably coming from the State House. We all found out last week that the planning department had nothing to do with this plan either. The planning department, town engineer, finance director, where is she? I bet you she's had nothing to do with it well. So right now, we have a plan that was developed by a solicitor, we think mainly, according to Rep. Craven last week, that is probably mainly James Callahan. I'm not quite sure. We don't really know. But it sounds like that person, and maybe people at the State House, came up with this plan, has nothing to do with the town enabling an act. We have the right to have zoning in our town. And as Mr. Friday so well said, this is going to take away the character of our town completely. Will we need schools in the future? We're just going to be built out by right. And with what John just said about having a duplex in front of a duplex on the side, it's going to change a total character to the town. And let the last one here turn the light off.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike DiLuca. I live at 21 Middle Bridge Road. I drafted a couple of written documents here. I'm going to submit the whole package to you later on.
Sounds good.
But my comments on two-family dwellings are going to just be focused on a couple components. Before I get into that, I just want to say I'm glad to hear that there's being a... We're having a significant discussion about the infrastructure impacts. I've been concerned about... I drafted a couple of written documents here. I'm gonna submit the whole package to you later on.
Sounds good.
But my comments on two-family dwellings are gonna just be focused on a couple of components. Before I get into that, I just want to say, I'm glad to hear that there's being, we're having a significant discussion about the infrastructure impacts. I've been concerned about how unmanaged growth in the community could be assimilated into our town's water and sewer infrastructure primarily. And so knowing that the board is attentive to that, having Mr. Gerhard here to give you the kind of detailed information that you've got from him tonight, I think is very valuable and should be a strong contextual component to be considered. So I'm gonna speak on just a couple elements of this. I'm gonna try to get a little context here. And again, preceding what I'm gonna say, I want to give credit to Ms. Sabo. She's done a great job in providing you folks with a really complete, comprehensive staff report, so I'm not gonna try to duplicate her work. So this proposed ordinance would revise approved standards located in zoning chapters eleven seventeen, eleven eighteen, and eleven twenty-four. And maybe not eleven eighteen to a great degree, but it's involved. Because there are three previous actions involved, keeping track of this is a little difficult. So let me give you a little background, and some of this does cover what Ms. Sabo said, but I'll try to be brief. Chapter eleven seventeen, when that was passed, the town council made no changes to which zones two-family dwellings were allowed in, but just added a lot area standard for consideration of a two-family special use permit in the R eighty zone. And in passing that, they required a lot area of one hundred thousand square feet for a two-family dwelling, eighty thousand square feet for a single family. The remainder of the R zones allowed two-family dwellings by right with lot area standards set forth in section six four of the code. These standards had been in place for decades. In eleven eighteen, as we know, that is the chapter where it amended section six point four by revising the dimensional setbacks, coverage, height standards, and others by fifteen percent to ensure that the mandatory fifteen percent modification, which was recently proposed by General Assembly, would return all properties to the same allowed buildable area as before. In eleven twenty-four, this is the key, the town council responded to the results of a recent zoning case, which is, I believe, pending in court today, by removing the allowance for two-family dwellings in R ten, R ten A, and R twenty residential zones, and revising the regulation in R forty zones from permitted by right to permitted by special use permit. This action was considered important to negate the possibility of developers gaining permits to expand single-family dwellings beyond the zoning designated densities, making them two-family dwellings, without providing any additional land to accommodate the increased utility of the residential lots or any affordable housing at all. The implications of massive density growth, as statistics were shown here tonight, without consideration of impact on sewer and water service, as well as expansion of speculative market rate housing with no affordable housing component, were too harsh to not take action. Staff had assured, very key, very similar to when we brought the bulk zoning regulations to this board and to the town council, staff assured the town council at that time that they wanted to revisit this issue and draft a thoughtful, defendable regulation that could reestablish an allowance for two-family dwellings in all residential zones when we felt that the state law was, would accommodate that. So now we have a proposed revision. And this revised chapter eleven twenty-four will amend the table of use regulations to allow two-family dwellings in all residential zones. It reinstalls the eighty thousand square foot lot area requirement for two-family dwellings in the R forty zone, but it does not set a minimum lot area for two-family dwellings in R twenty, R ten, or R ten A. It refers the reader to section twelve dash twenty-four to determine the area for two-family dwellings in R eighty zones. However, the text was removed by chapter eleven seventeen, so there's no standard to apply in R eighty zones. So this is, this is an area which will open gaps in the regulation, make it exceedingly difficult for the zoning officer and the zoning board to address when proposals are submitted. There are missing parts to this regulation. Now, most communities, including Narragansett up till a year or so ago, most communities in Rhode Island that allow two-family dwellings in their residential zones require a slightly larger area of land than what would be required for a single-family dwelling. This is to provide sufficient space for use by two families instead of one, and to ensure that it does not result in wholesale townwide density expansion that could overtax local utilities, which we heard a lot about tonight. It would make sense to withhold action on this ordinance and return it, ask the town council to return it to the planning board, so that complete legal analysis of the court decision, which we're still waiting on, may be undertaken, that will guide the planning staff and the town solicitor in drafting language that will ensure that areas allowing two-family dwellings provide sufficient area for human use, including some affordable units, and that are consistently regulated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to submit that to the secretary?
I've got a full packet on the desk. I'll be interested.
Okay. I'm gonna keep him busy. Anybody else? Sir?
Good evening. Jesse Pugh, forty Birchwood Drive. So I'm gonna, I'll approach this the same way I have the other amendments that we've talked about over the last week. Everyone, I think, has kind of touched on the infrastructure issues, sewer and water. I think that's been talked through enough. So what I'll focus on is the general theme that, you know, this amendment, along with the removal of bulk zoning and the removal of, or the implementation of state modifications of the fifteen percent bonus, they all remove the tools that are available to the town to incentivize affordable housing. Mr. De Simone, you mentioned the ten percent goal that the town has mandated by state. And there's no penalty, really, as far as I'm aware, of the town not hitting that, but it is a goal that we're all striving for. I think we're at like three or four percent the last time I checked that. That ten percent, I think we all can agree that we'll never reach that unless we have some sort of tools to incentivize developers to build affordable housing. And, you know, big A, affordable housing. And the only way we could do that is to provide those incentives to do it, because who, I mean, no one will do it without getting something more than they're allowed to have. So what we're doing, if this all goes through, is allowing people to build whatever they want by right. So I, I think duplexes, generally speaking, would be a good thing for the town in some capacity, and I think they could probably work in all zones, however, not by right necessarily. So when you, you know, when you remove those incentives that the town has or is able to use and to negotiate with a developer, you take away the possibility of some of these units being de-restricted affordable housing. And I guess my confusion is, how is the town council planning to get to this end goal that they've talked about when they're willingly taking those tools away from themselves? So that's my point. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Carol Spaziano, twelve Wrenstrom Road. I'm sorry. Carol Spaziano, twelve Wrenstrom Road. Everything that everyone said, I agreed with, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. There's one other issue I think should be taken into consideration, is the parking. The streets near where I live, there's not a lot of parking. I'm worried about emergency vehicles getting down the street. I don't know if that's been taken into consideration or not, but that's one of my concerns, is with, you have all these people parking. There's one house that I think I told you about last time, there's seven bedrooms. They're parking right now on state property, because they don't have enough room to park. They have enough room for like four cars, but sometimes it's twenty cars on the state property. On a side street, there's no vehicles gonna get through, no emergency vehicle. So that's my concern, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Staff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think everyone's covered it.
Okay.
Mark, I have a question for staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna come down through everybody. So I'll start with you.
Take questions for staff, or not?
Yes.
At this point in time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to, the struck out language on page five of this ordinance, proposed change, Jill, strikes out the conditions or provisions related to parking, landscape, trash disposal, traffic, and utilities. In the absence of this language, how would those issues be governed for two-family houses that are constructed?
Well, for parking in particular, it would, parking still is reviewed by the bedroom count, so it's one, it's a minimum of two spaces, and then one, so a one-bedroom house would have two spaces, two-bedroom house would have two, three-bedroom house would have three, would be required, depending upon what else is stricken or removed, because there are, as part of this whole package, there's a proposal to remove other segments of the ordinance, which would deal with anything after four bedrooms, which I believe this board was also in unanimous consensus with supporting a special use permit for homes exceeding four bedrooms. Parking standard would increase in that case because there was a concern about folks not parking tandem. We know you're probably gonna get a maximum of two people parking tandem, so if you have a really long, thin driveway, you're not gonna put six cars in it, especially if you're, people are moving all the time, they're not, they're not flowing as one unit. They are six separate units. So that would be for parking, but for other things, for trash, traffic, trash disposal would be just the way it is, there would be no special requirement for trash. Utilities, again, the same thing, and there certainly is not a provision for, let me see where we are.
Landscape. Landscape buffer and illumination?
No.
Okay. So.
No, nothing other than what's already in the ordinance for residential.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Sure.
Anything?
Oh, questions for staff?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. Doc? Questions for staff?
No.
Rupert? Okay. So again, understand that based on the rules or the instructions given by the town council, we're not taking a vote. We've been asked to give thumbs up or thumbs down. Council, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
All right. So, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Mark, I just had a question. Are we gonna do another round of comment, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just checking. I had a couple.
Sometimes, sometimes final comments blend into, I'm voting this way, and it's like, no, we're not voting this way.
That makes sense. I got you.
Doc, any final comments?
Yeah, the young lady who spoke about parking, you bring out a very, you know, it's a, no, it's a great point. Or anybody who's, lives near one of these over, overbedroomed, you know, usually students, but it can be summer people, too. We had a wonderful experience here with a illegally formed duplex down there by Scarborough Beach. Are we finished with the court hearings on that? Did we ever survive, or no? We're still spending money trying to straighten that one out?
It's not done, Dr. O'Neil. No.
It's where?
It is not, it is not complete. There's, as far as I know, no.
How many years? I'm getting old here, you know? But, no, but it's a, it's a great point, because this particular outfit, they illegally expanded and created a duplex, four bedrooms, one side, four. In any case, we all went down and looked at them, and there were all these, you know, people parking all over the place, six, eight cars on each side, on each side. And the neighbors were before us, crying and all that. Yeah, the idea of by right, to be able to do this with no thought process about something as straightforward as parking, is, to me, that's, speaking of the character of the town, I just, as I say, just, again, many of us know where the, you know, the six bedrooms or, and whatever, you know, fourteen students exist, so parking is an issue on this, just a comment.
Okay. Rupert?
I think I've already said most of what I have been thinking about. There's so many small lots, and as we heard from Wayne last meeting, lots of teardowns and rebuilds. And I think duplexes by right on all these little lots, as we've heard tonight, concerns about community character, concerns about impact on sewer and water infrastructure. And I think a large bill is gonna come due as they slowly get built. And I think, as Mr. Deluca said, you know, we had suggested that we come back and look at, thinking about duplexes comprehensively and how to make them work. And I think, as Mr. Pugh said, historically, we've had them in every community, every zone, but they've had adjusted lot sizes to manage the density. And I think thinking about that and thinking about the incentives for year-round housing and for affordable housing, I think are really important, to make them useful in addressing the comprehensive plan needs, identified needs of year-round housing, affordable housing, housing for families, housing for the area's workforce.
Okay. Tom?
Thank you, Mark. And I think you all recollect, I did not support the proposal that came from the planning board back to the, back to the council when it came out in February or March of twenty twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken. And my reason for that is, was twofold. One is, I saw the prohibiting two-family houses in R tens, R ten As, R twenties, the net effect of that being to push everything into R forties and R eighties. And I thought that was a problem, and I still think the way the ordinance is structured, that's a problem, because there are neighborhoods that we're all familiar with. I'm familiar with one particular that I'm living in, where it's rated an R eighty, and there's not an R eighty lot within that neighborhood, and you'd be fortunate to find an R twenty lot in that neighborhood. And most lots are below ten thousand feet. So you go to the zoning setback issue, and you do the math associated with that, and you got those issues in space. So point one was, I don't think it's fair or appropriate, when we're doing our work, to basically have the inadvertent or unintended consequence to push something into two other zones. So that was point one. Point two has, has more to do with a kind of a philosophical thought that I've had. I grew up in a two-family home till I was about ten years old. Louis and Gemma owned it, but they lived upstairs, the Calligans lived downstairs. Louis and Gemma were essentially able to afford their place to live by renting to the Calligans downstairs. The Calligans raised three kids in that place for seven or eight years. That is a model for both for making housing affordable for families, permanent, you know, permanent year-round rental, as well as wealth building for the people owning the property. And so philosophically, this one causes a little trouble for me. Having said all that, in the context of kind of delivering this in a package, as it's been delivered in the package and not in a standalone, not very well thought out in my judgment in terms of striking all the language with respect to. judgment in terms of striking all the language with respect to parking and trash and buffers and landscaping and things of that nature, I'm not prepared to support this change that the council has presented. Bigger picture wise, I'd say a couple of things to all of us. Having said that, all of the demand that we've talked about tonight, if it were to come to pass, would not come to pass overnight. And you have to be, in order to be credible in making the arguments, you have to account for that and say, look, our average daily demand could go up 50,000 gallons a day, and how are we gonna deal with that? But that's not gonna happen overnight. And, and I will say one other thing, and this is probably more to anyone who happens to work in the general assembly around here. The University of Rhode Island's motto is think big, we do. We ought to encourage the town council to challenge the University of Rhode Island to think big and allow us, and help us partner with them to think big about this issue. Sometimes trying to solve a problem by going smaller is not the way out, but the way is to think larger about it. So if the town, if, for example, one of the limits on growth in the town will continually be states would be, how do we basically get the right infrastructure in place? And Narragansett is the host community for the Bay campus. We house 7,000 kids. We've got 7,000, 7,000 kids making daily trips to the university nine, eight and a half months a year, and all the greenhouse gases that go along with it. There is a way, I've seen it done, at the University of Connecticut, we built more infrastructure, we got more employment, we built our enrollment, and we reduced the amount of water that we used, and we reduced the amount of sewage that we generated. We also built a 500,000 gallon, a 500,000, 500,000 gallon reusable reclamation water plant, using the water from the sewer plant that was feeding the cogeneration plant. You don't have those, you don't have that demand here in order to do that. And I agree with the comments on Dcel in terms of it being quite an expensive solution. But there is in the seed here in terms of the, a growing university that the state wants to be proud of, including the town of Narragansett, that is a host community for its Bay campus, which is a gem considered around the state, not around the country as a gem. And acknowledging that we've got 7,000 kids living here, that the university's not housing for reasons that they know best, that somehow, some way that the state, the town and the university can make a plan to make this thing better. If they're really interested in getting affordable housing here in Narragansett for permanent residence, I'll go back to what I said a few weeks ago. You can measure affordable housing by the number of units that are, whose rent charge or whose purchase price is below the annual median income. Another way to look at it is go to the census and look at the percentage of people here who live underneath, who live in, below the poverty line according to the census. That's 17%. And that, you know why that is? It's because the first, the census is taken on the first of April, and the, and the students disproportionately basically account for what happens here. So we can have a discussion about, do we want to build more affordable housing? Do we want to house, build affordable housing for students at the University of Rhode Island? Or do we want to build more affordable housing for permanent residents of the, of the state? Thank you.
Steve?
Sure. I'll get the easy ones out quick. Thank you, Mark. Getting rid of the parking and trash regulations in this, I, I don't love, I still don't love 40-foot tall buildings. I don't blame you for not wanting to be surrounded by them. Also, I agree with Tom. Right here, you can see URI is at 34% of their capacity while we house a ton of their students. It seems to me we could renegotiate that so that our capacity goes up and their capacity could go down overall, since again, their students are excreting into our sewers, to put it mildly. So, and then I just want to circle back to the affordability thing. Obviously, we can't make any more land. There's not much left in this town. So if you want to increase housing stock, which the comprehensive permit says that we do want to do that, one way of doing it is by allowing duplexes. Just like Tom said, that's a common occurrence in this town. One family owns the whole duplex, rents out the other side to another family. It happens all the time. I think it's great. I, I don't love duplexes, but I think that's great. And then the big A affordable, what they're striking here, it might seem like an incentive, but it is not. If you have one single family and you can knock it down and rebuild a single family, you will get more money than you will get for one half of a duplex. And for every price-restricted affordable you build, you cannot recoup your build cost, which means you're gonna make less money by building a duplex and price restricting one half of it than if you just rebuilt a single-family house, which means that that's not an incentive. It's in fact a disincentive to build affordable housing. Now, again, the density bonus is difficult to calculate and figure out, but 50% is not enough. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm trying to find it, you know, this has gotten to a point where it's, I'm actually getting overloaded with. Under this new ordinance, we can't require that one of the units is occupied, correct? Owner occupied, I believe, right?
No.
Right. I've always said that there's two types of affordable. There's capital A and there's lowercase a. Lowercase a tends to be year-round. We first purchased our home, we rented it, we chose not to rent it to students, we rented it to a retired couple, and we took considerably less in rent. But that was philosophically our decision. We didn't want to rent to students for our neighbor's sake, and, and we just felt it was more stable environment by having somebody there year-round. But that year-round rent is, is an affordable rent without being illegal affordable rent. I'm actually a opponent of duplexes. I think if they, sadly, we see too many of them today with the architectural designs are just hideous. But, you know, you look at the classic charm of a duplex, whether it's side-by-side or up and down, with the front porch, et cetera. The thing is, is the way this is done, to implement it this way, to me, is reckless and irresponsible. It is totally void of any consideration of the negative ramifications. And I agree with Tom, you know, growth is phased, but the realities are, phased or not, this is gonna have a considerable impact on, and you've heard it from the town engineer, it's gonna have an impact on our infrastructure. And that was a huge consideration on our part. You can argue where the market's gonna go or not, and you can analyze it from one way or the other, but the fact of the matter is, there's gonna be a demand for these homes. And it just, there is no affordable component to it. Mr. Pugh pointed out, something I've been saying all along, is that the town council's implementation of their changes eliminates any tools that the town has and that this board has used to bargain with, to make affordable. You've already given it to all the builders. So there is no incentive for them to do affordable. And I think with all these changes, you're gonna actually see the price of housing going up. I think the gap between market and affordable is going to get bigger, and I think affordable in this town will be strictly a phrase and not actually a practicality. So while I approve and endorse duplexes, the implementation here is frightening to me and horrific. I just, I just think it was not planned out. I'm hoping it wasn't planned out because if this was planned out, I think that's a little scary. I don't think it's consistent with our zoning. I don't think it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. Now, you can argue and you can pick out a phrase and say, well, you know, we say we need more housing. It says a lot more. The plan is very specific about growth. This is not consistent with that growth. I think this is a damaging strategy for the town long-term. I think financially, it could be crippling. You know, 200 or 300 foot, 200 to $300 a linear foot. You need to understand that our sewer pipes are miles, not feet, miles. And that is not a budget we can get out of user fees, and it's not a budget that this town can absorb in its tax rate presently. I think, and I hate to throw stones because I'm not a bucket-up thing, but, and I apologize to my friend, Mr. Craven, but it would have been great if, if the house had appropriated monies for infrastructure improvements based on the ramifications of these, because we're not gonna be the only community suffering through this. And I think the state is gonna have to take a look at, okay, we've done this, and now what? It was, it was one of the things that my friends of mine who did MBA programs said, why are you doing a master's in planning? It takes you two-plus years to do that. We're done in a year, maybe a couple of months. And what the, the discipline it taught me was, and I still remember Dr. Marka Marka Shell standing on a chair and pointing at me and yelling at me, she was a little old lady in the back of the room, tearing me, is that a planning discipline gives you the perspective of, okay, we solved this, this problem. And that's what my friends learned in their MBA programs, how to solve a problem. There's another step to that. And that's what, the power, I think, that the planning program gave me through my career and allowed me to be as successful as I, I have been in my career, is to step back and say, okay, we solved that problem. Now how many other problems did we produce by that solution? And to what degree is that really a solution? And I don't think any of that has been taken into consideration here or with a lot of this. I also want to step back. You know, we went over the definition of by right. If I recall, and I was going through my notes, and unfortunately, I've got reams of paper. This is my second book. I believe the liquor licenses are by right also, for, is it for existing like Sandwich Chompsons and stuff like that?
They are proposed to be by right.
By right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I shouldn't say that. They're proposed to not need a special use permit. There would still be a licensing component.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought there was actual wording that they had it by right, if I recalled. Again, a lot of this stuff is swirling. Don't go look. I know you'll find it. You're frightening. So, but I think that's a consideration to understand, you know? You throw this around, and council will tell you, by right is a frightening legal phrase. It is all-powerful, and I think we could, I, I think, again, duplexes are a great tool for any community that is seeking housing. Again, it's a tool. It's a strategy. It needs to be implemented tact, on a tactical basis, not just a sweeping change. That's my perspective on this. Okay, Doc? We're ju, no, we're not voting. We're just giving our thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay?
Well, you, you know where my thumb's gonna go. But, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to compliment Tom because he, he has no prejudice toward duplexes because I think you said you grew up in one?
Correct.
Yeah, I grew up in a triplex.
There you go.
And just as you mentioned, usually the people on the top floor owned it. Luckily, my, my dad was a very hard-working plumber. He owned it. So, so I have nothing against duplexes, but this, thumbs down.
Rupert?
Same perspective.
Lee, no?
Steve?
Surprise, surprise. I'm a thumbs up.
Okay. I embrace the philosophy. The implementation is just frightening, and I can't support this, as is. Okay? Does anybody want to take a five-minute break before we tackle the next one? Yeah, I got some nods, like, yeah, please do it now. So we're gonna, we'll take a 10-minute break because there's sometimes a line. So we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask for a point of information from the staff and council because I, you know, we talked before, there's content law and there's procedural law, and I think this falls under procedural law. Part of what the town council wants to do is alter the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 1998. Am I right?
No, the most recent one was 2017.
Oh, 2017, I'm sorry. My understanding of procedural law is that that requires hearings, and there's a whole process to address a comprehensive plan. Am I right in that?
You are right. It's laid out in the statute that creates the comprehensive plan process.
Okay. So for us to comment one way or another is moot. This is not the, this is not the venue for this. If they want to do this, they need to put together, they need to follow procedure and do that. Yes?
Well, I think they're asking you a question.
Okay.
Reference to that. And, you know, then from there, if the, if they felt that either you agreed with them, or that they wanted to continue on the path regardless of whether you agreed with them, they would have to have an additional process thereafter.
Okay, so that's on them. Okay.
It would come back to you, Mr. Chairman, as well.
Right.
Because for the comprehensive plan amendments, you are, not only is the town council required to have a public hearing, but you, as this board, are required to have a public hearing. There simply wasn't, um,
And this is not a public hearing.
There wasn't enough time afforded in this process. No. And I think you need, typically what happens is you have a conversation, multiple conversations as with the comprehensive, the latest update, for instance, Dr. O'Neil may remember, and some of you may remember. And then and then you would have a public hearing. So you, this is the, today, tonight, this evening, momentarily, will be the first time you've actually talked about it. But at some point, presuming that there's a recommendation that comes or a referral that comes down, you will need to have a public hearing. And that's a requirement for this board for the comprehensive plan.
All right. All right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't crossing a line legally in discussing this and being out of order.
No, I will actually get to it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It was in my notes.
Thank you. All right. I will turn this over to the staff.
I lost my other page of notes, speaking of.
No problem. My office is turning into a firehouse.
That's okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wing it. All righty.
That is, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, that is the first time those words have ever been uttered out of her mouth.
I just have my.
You want to take another second and look? Because you know it's going to keep you all up all night that you winged it.
It's going to drive me crazy. You're right. All righty. Ah ha, I have them. Okay. So the next, the next matter we're going to go over is the environmental, the environmental overlays. And this actually touches on, within the sections and chapters, it's chapter 1108, chapter 1117, sections 4.3, 4.4, and 16.1. All right. So for the environmental overlays, I want to just talk a little bit about the history. Again, I said this at the very beginning, and now that everyone's in the room, Heidi, Brian, and Amanda did yeoman's work trying to research, certainly with this section in particular, we went back, or they went back, actually, to the 1960s and dug out all kinds of old documents. So environmental importance and the references in Town Planning Amendments go back to the 60s. In the 1980s, we, environmental quality was really high concern. And in fact, in 1987, the coastal freshwater wetlands overlay and the coastal resources overlay were created. And they, at that time, in the ordinance, they were sections 3.3 and 3.4. And and I may have this, I may go back even further, but from the comp plan from at least 1998 until today, which is almost 40 years, the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance has referenced both of those overlays and environmental concerns. And the ordinance, so for today, in today's perspective, as you all know, those sections changed from 3.3 and 3.4 to 4.3 and 4.4, as you know them today. In 2015, the General Assembly removed a town's ability, or city or town's ability to locally regulate freshwater wetlands. And they also required CRMC and DEM to promulgate standards. So from 2015 to 2022, there was this gap while we waited for standards to be created. But sure enough, those standards were promulgated and took effect in July of 2022. At that time, the staff, we immediately began drafting revisions of the ordinance from, and I, again, looked back at my documents, I have revisions that go from August of 2022 all the way through the final draft and recommendation approval by the town council in 2023. So the town was, we had one year and we were, we were on it, trying to get all of those updates in accordance with state law. So that is chapter 1108, which which is part of these proposed changes. I'd like to just point out at the time that that was all vetted through legal, through our assistant solicitor, through our solicitor, and it was found to be in compliance with state law. What it did was it removed the special use permit requirement for the construction near a freshwater wetland. And it created actually a special review use. So that, because, because as you know, if you, if you, and I'm sure you have read the recommendation for 1108, because the municipality lost its ability, or in this case, the town of Nauri Gansett, lost its ability to locally regulate, doesn't mean the wetlands went away. It just, you know, they're still there. And they still inform other sections of our ordinance that we were putting in, we had put into place, specifically net lot area. And it also allowed us to inform the applicants when their property or when their project was potentially within the jurisdiction of either CRMC or DEM. So they would need to go get their permit before they could pull a permit here. I provided you folks today just that detail of what the, of what the state law is, so you could see what the state law was. And and I believe it was actually also included in the, in the proposed amendments, I think, whoever, whomever drafted, maybe Mr. Callahan or whomever, different Mr. Callahan, drafted. He, he did reference those state laws, which is 452430. One of the things I just want to point out for 2540, 452430, is it says, specifically, it says, under C, that nothing here in shall rescind the authority of a town or a city or town to enforce other local zoning ordinance requirements. So the, the language from the state law specifically says that will no longer be authorized to adopt as a provision of this ordinance, new requirements. So as I just mentioned, these requirements have been on the books since 1987. In relationship to freshwater wetlands, freshwater wetlands in the vicinity of the coast, coastal wetlands that specify setback distances, so on, so forth. So we couldn't create anything new. We didn't create anything new. And then it said it'll be, and then C says, the beginning, shall be prohibited from applying the requirements of existing zoning ordinances pertaining to both wetland buffers and onsite wastewater treatment systems setbacks to development, redevelopment, construction, or rehabilitation applications submitted to a municipality. So I just went back, just for everyone's understanding, and I grabbed the definition as they're referring to in buffer and setback, where it talks about buffers and setbacks. And both of those is very specifically within that definition refer to freshwater wetland, freshwater wetland buffers and freshwater wetland setbacks. So this was all vetted back when we first put it through in 2023, and it was all determined at that point to be legal. I just also want to point out that, of course, this board can recommend to have it removed, and so can the town council. This doesn't mean it couldn't be removed at any point in time. Chapter 1108, which, which you have before you, actually proposes to strike the definitions of coastal wetlands and freshwater wetlands. From a, from a staff perspective, I, I'm not, I'm not clear why we would be striking definitions, even if, even if all of the regulations go away, the town still has coastal wetlands, and we still have freshwater wetlands. They still seem germane to the town because, because they're still going to, applicants would still need to receive approval from either CRMC or DEM. So I'm, frankly, personally, I'm not, I don't understand it. But maybe we'll get clarification when this goes to town council. In section 4.3, they, and also in chapter 1108, they are actually striking the revisions that that this board and the town council had approved, which removed the need for a special use permit and added in that, as I mentioned, that special review use. And I'm sure you And I'm sure you can read all of the other things. They're striking section 4.3 in its entirety because the council, previous council and this board had recommended replacing it in its entirety. And then in chapter 1117, they are proposing to make changes to special use permits applicability, and that's the elimination of the text regarding special use permits and variances together. Specifically, and also, together, and then also in reference to sections 4.3 and 4.4. So I want to just point out to this board, and for anyone who's, who's listening, that this board has already made a recommendation based on the 2024 legislation to make a change to section 12.4 regarding the Newton law. So I grabbed that, just, again, I apologize for all the reading, but I, this is an excerpt from your current recommendation to town council regarding this section. Amendments to statute related to RIGO 452432 stating that municipalities shall, quote, shall consider the special use permit and the dimensional variance together to determine if granting the special use permit is appropriate based on, instead of both, based on each respective special use criteria and the dimensional variance evidentiary standards. This, this change effectively removed the Newton rule, which would have under Narragansett's current zoning ordinance, raised the standards of review to a use variance. Some of you may recall that. I.e., no beneficial use if required to conform to the ordinance. The change in the law, which is the striking of both the to each respective, allows a project to be reviewed on both the standards of special use permit and a variance without triggering that higher standard. So the draft that you had done in 2024 included that change. The proposed text amendment before you tonight actually strikes some of the language which you had stricken in, in order to negate the, in order to comply with the law, which negated the Newton rule. But it also doesn't address that each respective as opposed to both. So I'm not sure where that stands. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to address state standards, and I'm not, I'm not sure which would, I don't know how that's going to work out. Just want to bring that up to you as a point of unclarity. So we move to section 4.3, which is the coastal and freshwater wetlands overlay. Again, the, the proposed amendments before you strike the entirety of section 4.3, but this board has already stricken, this, this council, or previous councils have already stricken it. So that, that change could be considered outdated and maybe redundant. Section 4.4 is the elimination of the entire section. So that is new. As I mentioned earlier, that's not something that's under, hasn't been mandated by state law to remove. That's something that's, and has been deemed previously to be, and was vetted and deemed to be legal. So that is a new change by, by the council. Section 16, which is staff reviews, and that is proposing to delete the references to section 4.3 and 4.4 in the eligibility section. So one of the things that we had in our ordinance was, we referred to it as a staff review or administrative approval. So that meant if somebody was building something within the jurisdictional area of 200 feet, if it's a coastal feature, or if you're on septic or sewer, it could be anywhere between 100 and 150 feet. This is prior to our change. And you were over 50 feet away, but still within that area, we could do it administratively. The staff here would do it administratively. We would write administrative approval, have it recorded, you're on your way. Or if you were closer than 50 feet, but your existing structure, your existing house, you had a, you know, little inlet you were trying to infill, and you weren't getting any closer, could be done administratively. So there were a lot of provisions around being able to address the environmental component, but not having it go to a full-blown planning and zoning public hearing. It could be done administratively. And that's section 16.1. So the proposed changes actually eliminate the ability to use section 16.1 for those administrative approvals. There are, so I have some notes here. So the purposes of zoning might not be consistent with these amendments. So I do suggest that you take a look at yours, chapter 1108, your recommendations, and re-review to see if, if your previous, if your previous recommendations still are still consistent. So the last one is the comprehensive plan, the baseline report. Mr. Chairman, this is where we were getting to a minute ago. So in the, the, in the proposed amendments to you, the, what was submitted by the town council, is a deletion to the references of sections 4.3 and 4.4 in the baseline report. For those of you who may not be aware, familiar with the conference plan, it's divided into three pieces. It's the baseline report, it's the roadmap, and the action plan. The baseline report is intended to be a snapshot in time. I believe, I believe it's actually quotes in there that it's a snapshot in time. So it's static in its application. It just, it is where we were when we started. I leave it up to this board to how we can go back and change where we were. But, but nonetheless, it is a, it is a public hearing with this board as well as with the council, and you have not had a public hearing on this yet. So I might suggest that you, that as part of your deliberations and what you, what you bring back to council is that minimum, you're asking for this to come back if, if the council does choose to move forward. Typically what happens with an amendment to the comprehensive plan, if there's a zoning ordinance change as well, they come back in one piece together. So we can do it, we can look at them all at the same time. But right now, you haven't had a public hearing for the, for the comprehensive plan baseline or comprehensive, period, in this case, the baseline report. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions to the staff on that? They don't understand something or?
What was, what was the year that the comprehensive plan, was it 213?
2017, Dr. O'Neal.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So we're actually coming up on our 10 years, as you might know.
Can hardly wait. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? You got one? Go ahead.
I do. You said that now it's a special review use. I, I don't know what that is. What is a special review use?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it's in chapter 1108, which we provided to you, and it's also stricken out. So you have it twice. So if, if you don't mind, I'll just read it for everyone.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm going to try to read out the crossed out one. Let's see how that goes. All righty. So special review use. The town in Narragansett shall use the freshwater wetland overlay district and/or any information previously provided to the town to determine if a property is located within proximity to a freshwater wetland. Projects that are determined to be within the regulatory area as defined by RIDM or CRMC will be subject to state approvals and may be referred to RIDM/CRMC ahead of any town permits in order to first gain state approval. The town may, in its discretion, require any or all of the following in order to properly execute a building permit. A verified well and edge and/or preliminary determination from either RIDM or CRMC, depending upon jurisdictional authority. An approval from RIDM or CRMC as applicable prior to the issuance of a building permit. If the project necessitates any other zoning approval, such as, such approvals shall be necessary before issuance of a building permit from the town. So it's essentially putting people on notice that they need to go to RIDM or, or, or CRMC.
So, okay. I, I still don't understand what a special review use is. It sounds like a, it's, it's similar to, it sounds like a special use permit. I know it's not. That's why I'm trying to get clarification on that.
Sure. So it allows us to still use the information as a review?
Okay.
And then inform the applicant if they, if they are within jurisdiction or?
All right. So, so this is primarily handled in building and zoning? When they apply for a building permit?
Yes.
You use this information to tell them they go left?
Yes, yes, we do.
Then, is there anywhere else that you can get that information? Like the GIS map or their, their wetland survey, if they have wetlands on their property? I mean, these are things that DEM and CRMC are going to have, the state has, we have access to.
Yes, we do. We, we have, yes, we do. We have, we have wetland, well, and our wetland maps are part of our sections 4.3 and 4. It's actually in section four.
Okay.
Doc?
No, I'm waiting for a wonderful presentation again from you.
Oh, I do, I do actually, thank you. If we go to the last slide, thank you. So just, so I did, at the last minute, I just threw this up here. What you're looking at are all the wetlands in town. So you're looking at not just our local wetlands that we had, that we have as a local layer, but you're also looking at the state freshwater wetlands. And I included the buffer areas because that will generally match what the jurisdictional area is for CRMC or DEM, just to give you a visual of, of what the wetlands. So I also want to point out that this is informational only. So we're going to use it to inform an applicant. But if the applicant comes back with a verified edge of one of those points in the special review use that says, hey, in fact, I don't have these wetlands on my lot, or I do, and they're, but they're not the way they're shown, that's, it's just kind of letting folks know. Ground truth information is always, supersedes GIS information.
Doc?
So everything representing in green is a wetland?
So, yeah, so it's a little tricky, Dr. O'Neal, and I, I apologize, I didn't give you the, the one you can zoom in on. But essentially, everything you see in, with some kind of green shading is either, it's either a, a wetland as we, as was confirmed in 1987. It's a state layer. We, I included both local and state layers.
Yeah.
Or it's that what we used to use as the buffer area, which is about 100 feet, or 100 to 150 feet, which is somewhere would throw an applicant into that jurisdictional area with either CRMC or DEM. So I just want to give you an idea of approximately how many properties might be touched by, by needing a, a state approval.
I'm not a mathematician, but it looks like about 70 or more percent?
It's a lot.
Of the town. Okay.
Rupert?
So I was looking at the 1987 ordinance, and I think the language here is, is interesting about the overlay districts. It, it reads, "They are intended to alert landowners that their property has limitation for developments. The maps, overlay sheets are not a substitute for site survey," and basically says to go get, get the boundaries. So it's, it was never intended to be regulatory when it was, when it was drafted. It was to inform landowners that, hey, you need to.
Originally, yes. And then, and then it became, yeah, I believe in 1987, when it became part of the zoning ordinance.
And I guess my sense is, since we really don't, didn't get language explaining why these changes are being proposed, reading, reading between the tea leaves, sort of the, the state taking the wetlands regulations, and so it's, it's done by either CRMC or DEM, and saying, okay, Narragansett's not supposed to be regulating wetlands, but sort of in a planning role, you need to know if you have buildable lots. So you need to interface with the state delineation of wetlands. So I think it's still really important. And I guess the other piece is the coastal, coastal resource overlay district addresses coastal access, addresses stormwater runoff, addresses shoreline features such as protecting bluffs and dunes. So really important aspects that don't have anything to do with wetlands.
Correct. So that would be section 4.4.
Right.
Right.
Tom?
Just quick questions. The world's changed since 87, but I presume that the record, kind of the official record is not in terms of what we're using for wetlands, the delineation of wetlands and buffers up there right now.
No. So as I mentioned, Mr. Callahan, we sort of use it as that first level of information. And then oftentimes, what you find is that people already know that there's a wetland on their lot, and they, they will give us, they'll either acknowledge it, or they'll give us an unverified edge, you know, previous to. So, and in some cases, in some of the locations in our ordinance, it's actually a requirement to have a verified edge.
I forgive me for not asking the question more precisely. What I'm asking is, there must have been a source for that information in 1987. I presume that source is still the same source and it hasn't changed.
That, yes, it has not been updated, sirl and sirl. Correct.
Thank you.
David?
I, I think I got my head around that question. Yeah. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. We've been operating under these rules for the last year. I mean, more or less.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
We've been operating under the fact that CRMC and, and they have jurisdiction over wetlands.
Oh, we have not, we have not enforced wetland, especially as per freshwater wetlands, since July of 2022.
Right.
Oh, no, we're compliant.
Yeah, we've been compliant.
Yes. And we changed our rules within that year.
Right. But some of the stuff that's being stricken are, are things that assist developers, builders, and homeowners in, in determining where they have to go and what they have to do. We save them time, we save them money, and we save them a whole lot of frustration. You know, some of this has already been done. But there's, again, I guess, I'm trying to even grab onto something, but there's no whys in any of this. There's no explanation as to what the benefit to the community is by striking all of these. It, you know, and we've seen this over and over again, and it's been a frustration in that not understanding the philosophy, the expected impacts, and the expected ramifications, and what, what the positive or negative outcome is going to be, lost as to what the motivation is. So I guess I'm confused and have been pretty much this whole thing, and I've been honest about that. The, the whole changes to the baseline, to me, that's, you know, revisionist history. I understand the strategy behind it. If you eliminate it then, then anything you propose now is in concurrence with the comprehensive plan. So if we do it for wetlands, what stops the council from doing it for other things? And start editing as we go so we can do what we want to do now? I have a huge problem with that. It just, you know, that was a snapshot in time. That was what existed then. It allows us a perspective to see where we've come and where we've gone. But when you start going back and changing history so that you can justify something you're doing now, that goes way beyond any reasonable powers of authority for any jurisdiction or, or body, as far as I'm concerned, so.
So if I just, Mr., I mean, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, just as one point to Mr. DeSimone's point about the special review use, that that special review use actually provides direction and clarification for prospective applicants because it lets them, it lets them know that they may be required to get an edge verification. It lets them know that they're going to need to get a permit before they come to the town to pull a building permit. It, it benefits the applicant to be aware of that. Otherwise, they, you know, often, sometimes it, it happens where people come in and they're, they're just not aware, and it's a, which permit do I need first? Who comes last? So it does provide that very clear information to them.
And we've seen the frustration on people. We saw a gentleman just last month or the month before bought a house, was told, basically, if you get a building permit, you're all set. And then somebody said, well, wait a minute, you've got five bedrooms in here, you've got to do this. And he came to us frustrated, confused, I think pretty angry, he held himself in check. And we worked with him, and we educated him, and at the end, he thanked us. And he said he wished he had knew ahead of time because it was saved in frustration. And that's what this step does. You know, we, we try to work with people. In fact, I don't know how many times we have been schooled as a board by council to stop because we're getting too involved in a, a development or a project. I, I don't understand the strategy. I don't understand what the end results are, and, and I don't like working in the dark. And as I said, revisiting, revisiting history and changing history is a frightening precedent. And, and not only shouldn't be allowed, it should be illegal, but that's my perspective on it. Anybody else want to add anything on a redirect? Open, staff, anything?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. Anybody from the audience? Sir?
Steve Ferandy, 44 Silken Road. Thank you, planning board members and staff. This is just another, it just seems like with these ordinances, we're like weaving ourself in re- ourself in reality and out of reality with this, as the chairman stated, as far as where does it come from? And, you know, you have some of this, is it a mandatory adjustment? Some of it is, and then we have some that are just taking out and rewrites added in. We never know what's right and wrong. So I think the only way to figure this out, and I had a couple of questions that might be able to do this, is what is the genesis of this report? Who actually wrote it? I know we say it's Mr. Callahan, and did the, did the town
And I just want to go on the record, we don't know that it was just Mr. Callahan.
That's what I mean.
It was introduced by two counselors.
Right.
So, but nobody's ever said why. And I should have stepped in a long time ago on that, and I apologize to Mr. Callahan.
My next question would be, if the town hired, you know, another planner or someone else, or another staff member or someone to help craft this, maybe they should be here to help explain what the changes were, why some things were weaved in and weaved out. So I don't know, maybe an applicant request can be put in to see if the town actually hired a helper or some planner or another attorney, a zoning attorney, to craft these ordinances the way they are. That's where the only way I think we're going to get to the bottom of it. You know, some things are completely crafted out, they're in, they're added out, some things are completely lined out. And, and all we have is Mr. Callahan saying that he's the one, you know, we, we think he did the rescission. So my point would be is to see if you can ask the, the staff or the town to see if they hired someone to help them with this. I don't, you know, that's the only thing, at least we could get them there, and we can have a better explanation of why, though, who's the whats and whys and all of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you much. Anybody else? Sir? In the cheap seats.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael DeLuca, 21 Middlebridge Road. May I ask a question before I get going?
Who are you directing the question to, sir?
It's a procedural question, my friend. Are we covering wetland overlay and comp plan at the same time, or will we be covering comp plan later?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead. We're not formal here, and please, go.
So I have them both tonight as one because they relate to one another. I, I didn't anticipate the comp plan conversation being very long, but you, Mr. Chairman, it's your prerogative if you want to take them separately or all together.
I, I brought up both sets.
Okay, go for it.
So again, I have some written comments and my, my packet that I will give to Mr. Friday is right here. In regard to the wetland overlay, I focused my commentary on chapter 1108, because in that one, revisions were proposed to the chapter, to, in this chapter, to seek, to eliminate the definition of coastal wetlands, freshwater wetlands, and to delete the entire section comprising wetland overlay district 4.3 and coastal resource overlay district section 4.4. Let me say, I believe I'll be kind of doubling over some of the comments that Ms. Sabo made, but I want to get my personal read on it on the record. So the history of this is that the town in Narragansett has employed overlay districts, as you know, since the 1980s, when, some of you may not know, we were the fastest growing town in the state by population. The reasoning behind these regulations was that developers were building in close proximity to these sensitive resources, and there was general concern townwide that they would be filled for more development. This and other growth-related issues were of such high concern that the town council instituted a moratorium in 1987 on all development while the regulations were being researched and written for adoption. The wetland and coastal overlays are just two of five resource overlays employed by the town. There are others, there are three others, the flood hazard overlay, the high water table limitations overlay, and the steep slope overlay. The other three overlays do not have a mapped district boundary, per se, but identify site characteristics of concern and provide performance criteria to follow for anyone altering land with those noted characteristics. I can tell you that staff was keenly aware that the right to regulate wetlands would be taken away after RIDEM promulgated their new regulations. Took them seven years to do it, so we had a little advanced knowledge. Once those regulations took effect in 2022, the ordinance was revised, as Ms. Sabo says, to remove the regulatory element, and I underline that, but to leave the identification component, which is a useful planning tool. It provides an indicator of where an applicant may need to seek RIDEM or CRMC approval to alter their land. The building inspector relies on the community development office to help direct owners to apply to the appropriate state department and receive an assent before issuing a building permit. This practice saves people much frustration and cost of having to cease and desist work if and when they were issued a notice of violation by RIDEM or CRMC staff. And that's what would happen if we didn't provide that service, we, meaning the town, didn't provide that service to applicants who come to the town. For this reason, it's appropriate to retain the wetlands overlay as an assistive tool for the benefit of people trying to carry out due diligence before initiating a home building or expansion project. In regard to coastal features, as regulated in section 4.4, these are not necessarily defined as wetlands. The edge of a coastal feature may be a marsh or other wetland, true, but can also be a seawall, a fence, an edge of a lawn, a natural beach, dune, or a rocky coast, or something else. These features create the line on the ground from which the 200-foot regulatory area is measured. In 2022, staff conferred with legal counsel when considering what, if any, revisions were needed to section 4.4. It was determined that no changes were necessary and that the town retains the right to regulate development within the 200 feet of the coastal feature. In chapter 1108, as drafted for revision, there is a quote from the most recent state law on wetlands, and it says, "A city and town, a city or town shall no longer be authorized to adopt, as a provision of its zoning ordinance, new requirements that specify buffers or setbacks in relation to freshwater wetlands, freshwater wetlands in the vicinity of coast, or coastal wetland." There is nothing in the state law that requires the wetland overlay district to be removed, only that it cannot implement local buffers or setbacks. As adopted in June 2023, chapter 1108 removes those regulatory elements and leaves the informational components. In regard to the coastal resources overlay district, there's nothing in the state law that removes the town's right to continue to exercise this regulation as originally adopted. In regard to the comprehensive plan, I stand before you as co-author of the first, second, and third comprehensive plans of this town. I know more about the comprehensive plan than most people do, although Jill's come up the ladder pretty fast. The, the town in Narragansett Planning Board, your predecessors, including Dr. O'Neil, initiated work on the total rewrite of the town comprehensive plan in late 2012. It was, it was actually started on my son's birthday. It began with two open workshops conducted by the staff and our consultants, the Horsley Witten Group. Following the two opening workshops were several working meetings addressing specific topics that were identified as what were called formative issues at the outset. When completed, the staff and consultant produced the baseline report, which summarized the conditions in town within and addressing those state-required topics Mr. Craven mentioned in the state law, chapter 4522.2. And I believe there's 14 sections in the state law now. Every one of those issues was addressed as it relates to the current conditions. This report was completed in late 2013 and provided a snapshot in time, we've said it before, as to the then-current status of the town's various services, facilities, regulations, as well as residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial inventory and status. Between 2013, 13 and 15, the staff and the planning board worked with a consultant to draft the forward-looking roadmap, which is the plan, and the action plan, which is a matrix of all the objectives in the plan, as our land use policy guides for the next 10 years. In 2016, the town council approved that draft and sent it to the state of Rhode Island, where it was approved in 2017 with comments from the state as to changes needed. Minor edits were made responding to those state comments, and the town council approved and adopted the full plan, all three documents, in September 2017. So the baseline report had no future policies, objectives, actions, or programs elucidated within it. Its purpose was to inform the roadmap and the action plan by providing baseline information. There's no reason to amend this baseline report. It's, it's a report of factual evidence. That's all it is. And it creates, I'm sorry, it conveys an accurate depiction of the zoning regulations in place in 2013, which included the wetland overlays and coastal overlay. Should the town council see fit to amend the roadmap and action plan to remove references to the wetland overlay, it would be useful to engage the planning board to determine what elements of the regulation may be retained. And I refer back to my comments on the wetlands. In regard to coastal resources, as stated in my wetland commentary, staff was advised two years ago, three years ago, that there's no need to revise that or remove it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. DeLuca? Okay. None? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, I just on that last statement that you made, the town was advised by who that no changes were needed or were required?
Town solicitor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Staff?
No, I don't have any comments. It's really now, as I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, do you want to take them separately, the comprehensive plan and the amendment?
I have somebody in the audience who wants to speak.
Oh, absolutely.
No, 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 I think, hold that thought.
Oh, I don't have any questions for Mr. DeLuca, if that's what you meant. No, I'm all set.
Yes. Mr. Pugh?
Hi, Jesse Pugh, 40 Burchwood Drive. I guess I just have more of a question than a comment. I'm just looking at the proposed amendments to the, to the baseline report, and I guess my question is, since this is more of a snapshot in time as opposed to like an action plan, which is more of a factual, factual statements about the baseline, you know, about districts within the baseline report, if areas are removed, if text is removed from this, wouldn't it, it seems like it would make the information inaccurate because it's from a specific time? So you're removing information that was true at that time, and you're erasing it. It's not a new document that has a new point of view or new information, it's a historical document. Is that not correct? Or is it more nuanced than that? I guess, yeah, Ms. Sabo, maybe, or if anyone has an opinion on it. I'm just trying to understand.
So I was just going to say, as Mr. DeLuca pointed out, it is, I think he said it pretty clear, it's a report of factual evidence, is I believe what he said, which is, it's a snapshot in time. I'm not, yeah, I, I'm not sure how changing the snapshot in time would, would affect the roadmap and the action plan, because the roadmap and the action plan are based on the snapshot in time.
Right, right. So then if this was amended, does that then create a new, in terms of records, does it create a new document, an amended version, and then there's still access to the previous document?
No. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, yeah, some, somewhere we would have the, we'll have the, the old version of it. But any, anything that is updated, then the, any part of the comprehensive plan or any ordinance for that matter will be adopted, and then there'll be a new revision date, and then that will be the new plan going forward.
Right, so the old one would still be available in full as a previous version, online or whatever, right?
Yes.
Right? Just like any other ordinance?
Just like any other ordinance, you can go back in history and see. We're better at it now than we were, we were 60, trust me. Yeah, previous, it was very difficult to backtrack, but.
Okay. And is it typical to, maybe I'm just repeating what Mike said, but is this a typical request to change a baseline report? Has, or maybe Mr. Craven might know, because you're, I think you are a town solicitor, right, elsewhere? Or is that not right?
I am.
Okay.
One of them.
Right.
Your question was, is this typical?
Yeah, so have you seen this done before, where a baseline report is changed? Not the action plan or the general comprehensive plan, but specifically the baseline report?
I've never seen that happen.
You haven't? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
I've never seen it in my experience, and that's four different states, so. Do you guys want to address these as separate items from each other? They take, yeah?
I think it's only going to affect me, but I'd like to take them separately.
Okay, no, it's, everybody okay with taking them separately? Okay. Before we take that, is there anybody else who has anything they'd like to say? Or at? Okay, thank you. All right. So we're going to take these separate, so we'll take the initial environmental, and then we'll take the comprehensive plan. Staff, you want to say anything before we make comment?
No, but I'm available for questions.
Okay. Doc?
Nope, I'm waiting for Rupert. He's, he, he knows the story here.
I think, as we've discussed tonight, that some of the changes are, are striking provisions that have been added to streamline, and I think that's, that's crazy. I think it's, that the, the overlay districts still have an important role in that, whether the town regulates the wetlands or the state regulates the wetlands. The presence of the wetlands inform buildable lots, and the coastal resources overlay, I think, has a lot in it that's different from the wetlands. So I think, I think it's important to keep them, and I think it's based on a long history, the overlay districts. So I think it wasn't any, I didn't know that it was, didn't know that it was a moratorium put in place to create them, but I can understand that happening with a lot of element happening at the time, so, but I've been in place for decades at this point, so.
Tom?
I don't have anything more to say other than to back what Jill said at the beginning. Eliminating the language doesn't eliminate the facts on the ground. People need to be aware of what the facts on the ground are.
Steve?
Sure, thank you. So 4.3 has already been stricken, so really, we're, we're talking about 4.4 here, which does require a special use permit within the coastal resources overlay district. Is that right?
No, not, no. So section 4.3 was replaced in its, previous to 2023, section 4.3 was required special use permit. It was proposed to be, and was adopted to be replaced in its entirety, which is chapter 1108. So the 4.3 still exists, but in lieu of a special use permit, it's the special review use, and it still is, it's still applicable for anything other than freshwater, so for, for a mar, a salt marsh, for instance.
Okay. And what about 4.4?
4.4 is, yep, there was no previous change to that.
Yeah, there was no change to that.
Yes.
So the, the special review use exists now instead of the special use with a freshwater overlay, and the coastal resources overlay, and the coastal resources overlay does require a special use permit?
The coastal resources overlay may require a variance in special use permit, depending upon, as I mentioned before, for section 16, where it is and how close it is and what, frankly, case by case basis, right, what's on the ground. So if there's a house 20 feet from the feature, and you want to put a, an addition on your house 40 feet from the feature, then it's an administrative approval. But, but yes, it's still, I missed the first part, but yeah, they, they both still exist in some fashion.
Yes, you can require, all right, so.
Yes, it's not always a public hearing, though.
Yeah, so my, my next question is, if somebody comes to you with the required permitting from CRMC for coastal or DEM for wetlands, have we ever denied them a special use permit?
In the last, since in my tenure?
Sure.
Has someone been denied for special use permit? But, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, then, it seems like it's not, it seems like it's a good strikeout to me to get rid of that, if we're, if people are obtaining permits from the state as required.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. DiSmo, I misunderstood. My bad. They had, had they received a permit from DEM and then came to us. So, so both of those regulatory agencies operate differently.
Yes.
DEM, you can go and you can get your permit, and then you can come to the town and have your permit in hand, and in that case, no, I've never seen that happen. I've never seen a project have a DEM permit in hand and be denied. I have seen projects come through that didn't have a DEM permit and were denied, and I've seen projects in the coastal resources overlay be denied.
Okay, even with permitting in hand?
Never. With CRMC, you never have a permit in hand. They take the last bite of the apple.
Okay. But now, if this was, under the new law, you do need to have CRMC permitting?
You will always need to, if you're in CRMC's jurisdiction, you will always need their permitting, and they always take the last bite of the apple.
Okay, so I guess my.
Except in this case, because you, you would need, in a freshwater wetland situation with CRMC, previous do, they take the last bite of the apple, they get, you have to get all of your town approvals before you go to CRMC, and then you get their assent. And now, with the special review use, you would need to have a CRMC assent, there's no approval for the town, you would need to have a CRMC assent before you can come back and get a building permit. There's no requirement for a special use permit anymore in CRMC or DEM for freshwater wetlands.
All right. But we still have a special use permit requirement?
No. That's what I'm telling you.
Or some work in the coastal overlay district?
In section 4.4, yes, if you don't meet the parameters of section 16.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so that, and that's what they're trying, that's part of what's being.
They're two separate, though, I just want to make sure we're not conflating the two, because the one that we were required to be compliant with the law, we are, which is freshwater wetlands, that's in section 4.3, coastal and freshwater wetlands, and then section 4.4 is coastal resources. So it may be a marsh, but it's rocky shorelines, it's dunes, it's hardened shorelines, it's a, you know, it's seawalls, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, of course, which I understand, I'm just trying to drill down on how many permits you need to do something in the quote, let's, I mean, you've got filling, dumping, you've got construction of roads, parking areas, other facilities, construction of any marinas, you've got installing structural or any kind of shoreline protection, underlying beach, you've, there's a lot of special use permits, and then we've got a lot of prohibited uses in, in these regulations as well, which if CRMC permits them, I don't see why we wouldn't. So I guess that's where my confusion is.
Right, so our, our, yeah, so with prohibited uses, we would, we would always try, we would always default to CRMC, and I, I didn't check it ahead of time, I didn't know the question, but I'm sure that our prohibited uses match CRMC's prohibited uses. Maybe they're probably a little more stringent. But with regard to what you, the list you just read off, those are the, those are the actions that could create a special use permit. You don't need a special use permit for each one of those actions.
Yeah.
It's just.
Any one of them would trigger a special use permit.
Yeah, potentially any one of them could, would, would trigger the need for the, for the review.
Okay. All right, I think I got it.
And it may not be, it may not be a special use permit in a public hearing, as I mentioned. It could be an administrative approval.
Okay, so, I think I got it.
Tom?
This is a question either for council or for Jill. Does CRMC have jurisdiction on coastal features that aren't wetlands?
They have coast, they have jurisdiction for anything that's within their jurisdictional area of anything to do with the coastline. Doesn't have to be a wetlands.
So CRMC is, their jurisdiction is anything on the coast, so that could be, that could be salt marsh, that could be, you know, rocky shoreline, that could be anything. But in the town in Aragonset, they also have jurisdiction over freshwater, some areas, freshwater wetlands in the vicinity of the coast, so we don't have a map in front of us, but imagine the triangle that goes from Kingstown Road, 108, and Ocean Road, and the interior of that triangle is DEM's jurisdiction, and the exterior of that triangle, even if it's a freshwater wetland, it's still within the jurisdiction of CRMC.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So, I've had a clear understanding of the overall strategy of this grouping of changes, and I started out saying I had a begrudging respect for the strategy that was put in place. I actually think it's brilliant. The actions here, though, run counter to the overall strategy that this council has put forward, and really contradicts their actions in all the other ordinances that they have eradicated. We haven't been a regulatory group on this for as long as I can remember right now. I mean, it's probably been a year, but since the laws have changed, we've not been regulatory. The service that we provide, though, are utilized for the ease, time savings, money savings, and frustration savings of those with proposals. I mean, if you can imagine just marching up and putting your file in CRMC, and you wait the time, because it's not an overnight process, and it comes back and say, well, you're missing this, 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 and this, and this, and this, and now you've got to go back all over again. I mean, most of this stuff is handled administrative. If it's not, it's handled very quickly, and, and informing people, hey, you know, here are some things that we think, we see, based on our experience, that they're probably going to be looking for. And we have been in informational and aid mode to try to expedite the process for the applicants since this was all put in place. So this whole cleft just seems to run counter to the direction that the town council wants to take the town, and I, I don't understand it. I don't understand it. It's, you know, I've never seen this board try to step into the grounds of, of regulatory. It's always been deferred to the state. It's a clear understanding, it's a clear divide, I mean, there is no, no if, ands, or buts about it. But we have done everything we can to help expedite the process, inform the public of what they need. This is a world that most people don't understand, and when you develop an arrogance, whether you're, you know, Johnny and Jane Smith, or whether you're Super Company Inc., there is water no matter which way you turn, and there's an alphabet to go along with that. And the Department of Planning and Development does an amazing job of assisting people in this process, and this board has bent over backwards and really takes pride in also doing that. So I don't understand this, it seems to run counter to what the council is trying to achieve in, in the other actions that they've put forward here. I'm at a loss here, so, I, I can't support this as is. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. This has been said now about 50 times, so we don't understand what they're trying to achieve here with, with this request, so, yeah, I can't support it, I don't see any reason for it.
Nothing? Tom?
I, I'm not sure whether or not it's our role to try to understand what they're trying to achieve. What our role is, is to tell them what they have proposed, whether it meets the criteria that have been established in terms of the comp plan and the rest of it. So, I, I just, I can't support it, because it doesn't, it's not consistent with my understanding of the principles, you know, the, the purposes of zoning or the comprehensive plan.
Thanks, too. Steve?
Sure. So I'll venture a guess at why they struck all this out. As somebody who's had to obtain special use permits, it's maybe not as easy as it might seem from the discussion we're having, and especially if it's something that if CRMC says yes, or DEM says yes, then we don't say no, then I don't see a reason to have all this extra stuff in. I don't think that you're prevented from telling people that they're in a high water table or a high, or a coastal overlay district by striking this. You can certainly still tell them that, the information's readily available on the internet, it's available at the building inspector's office, it's available at the community development office. I, I don't think this does anything to strike that in a meaningful way, but it does make it one less step in developing your property or using your property the way you want, so I am going to be a thumbs up on this one, too.
Right. So Staff, you want to address the comprehensive plan revision?
Mr. Chairman, did you want to do, was that your consensus for this?
That was our consensus, yeah.
For this, I'm sorry, not agenda item, for this topic? That was your consensus right there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sure, so for the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned previously, we've gone over here with the, with folks in the audience as well, it is the, it is a proposed edit to the baseline report. You need to have a public hearing on it. You haven't had a public hearing on it. This is the first time you've discussed it in the four meetings that we've had, well, this is the third, fourth, but it is the fourth meeting you've had, this board has had since March 3rd. I think, I, you can't really move forward on it because you haven't had the public hearing. I, I would suggest that you ask the council, you let them know that you, you need to get it back, because you need to have the public hearing on it, and then if it comes back, it should, if it comes back, it should come back with the text amendments, whether they are as they are today, or in some other revised format, so that way they could be taken together with the zoning ordinance amendment and the comprehensive plan amendment at the same time. That would be my suggestion to you.
All right, I have informational questions, procedural questions to council. This is not a public hearing. Can I allow public comment on this, or do we get into some problems there?
I wouldn't take the chance.
Okay, thank you. Can the board members make comments on this?
They were instructed by the council to make their comments and to respond to it, so yes.
Okay, thank you. So, folks, you understand why? Thank you. Doc?
So, am I understanding it, we should be having a quote, "public hearing" directed by the town council for this discussion, and we're not in that situation? Am I getting that correctly?
I'm sorry, Dr. Neal, the question one more time?
Yeah, we, this is not considered to be a public hearing.
No, it is not a public hearing. No, this is, this is a public meeting, so, yeah, so this is a public meeting, it's open to the public, public and comment, but it's not considered a public hearing. Public hearing has specific notification requirements to it.
So, your description or recommendation is, we should be asking the town council to direct us to have a public hearing for this discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be asking, because it's, it's, frankly, because you haven't had enough time, because we, we did the best we could do, this board did the best it could do to get a quorum of five people here within the timeframe, and there wasn't, there was no workshop, there was, there was no lead-up, and there were 13 other amendments, so you, you need to have a public hearing on it, so you'd have to go back and ask them for more time.
Well, if we need a motion, I will, the chair will ask for that, I guess, but certainly I would move that.
Procedurally, are we putting forth a motion, or are we just, this is still advisory, isn't it?
It's still advisory, but you're going to explain the reason why you didn't act.
Right.
Which is, you're mandatorily required by state law to conform with a public hearing in certain advertising.
Procedurals.
The amount of time that you give people to get notice, you've got to do that the right way, and so therefore, based on all of your comments, you can say, we didn't have the time or to, to do it properly, and we didn't want to do it the wrong way.
Okay, thank you. Rupert?
I guess my thoughts on advice to town council is to recommend that they send back to us the request to look at the comprehensive plan and see what changes may be necessary to achieve what they're trying to achieve, and it's not clear to me what they're trying to achieve. I, I think it's pretty clear that changing the baseline document makes no sense at all, so.
Okay. Tom?
I'd recommend that the town council reconsider whether it wants to send this to us, first, based on the information that's been presented so far, in terms of, do they really want to amend an evidentiary, what's been called an evidentiary document? So to consider whether or not that's what they really want to do, and if they really want to do it, then to follow the procedure that you've laid out.
Steve?
Sure. Shockingly, I, I don't understand updating the baseline plan, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Obviously, we, seems like we can't do it, according to council, so I, I wouldn't even recommend sending this particular, I'd just say, forget about this, and we've got to come up with a new comprehensive plan in, what, two years?
We're already in the process.
Yeah, so, they're like, pointless to me, but that's all I got.
Thanks, Steve. So, I've never seen this done before in my 45 years of experience. I understand the ramifications, though. If you change or edit the baseline report, you change everything going forward, and you only do that for one thing, to reflect the desires and the objectives of the actions you want to take today or in the future. It is an ugly and dangerous precedent to take on any level, whether it's federal, state, or local. It allows you then to change anything you want to reflect where you want to go, not where the town wants to go, not where a year or two of study and public hearings and meetings with neighborhood groups, individuals, the hashing over with legal counsel on all levels, it is counter to open government. I think it's a dangerous, dangerous precedent. That said, that's my philosophy. I think our motion, excuse me, our recommendation would be to ask the council to adhere to procedural law in reference to changes to the, to the comprehensive plan. And I'm not going to map it out, I mean, we know, they should know what the procedural law is, if not their council, or council can help them. But then to, to hold public hearings, to send it through the process, send it back to us for a recommendation based on procedural law in these cases. Otherwise, I don't think we can take any action on it, so. It's advised by council. Do you want something else?
No. No.
I think I gave you enough that you can edit that. You're very good at that, so. But I think it was clear from council that this needs to go back, we need to follow procedural law in reference to any changes to a comprehensive plan, which are step by step explicit within the state regulations. Anybody on the board disagree with that? Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm just thinking out loud, probably, if the plan was amended as the council has proposed, would any party who had been deemed to have been aggrieved by a decision that this board made have a this board made have a basis in which to pursue a remedy?
I don't think so. I mean, anything's possible.
Great question.
A court of, a court of law is a place where people start process by going, give them $185 and file a complaint. From what happens from there, as far as being successful, I can't imagine a successful lawsuit that would arise out of this particular town council action.
But if someone wanted to take that chance, it would not result in the town not having to spend money to defend itself.
The doors are open at the courthouse at 9:00, and they close at 4:30, so, yeah, you can go in with your money and do whatever you want.
Thank you.
I think it was a great question. Right. Staff, where do you wanna go?
I, if, if, that's where you are?
Do you wanna review what we have tomorrow night?
Yep, I can certainly do that.
For the audience, can we put the slide up?
So for tomorrow night, you have, you have site plan review tomorrow night. You have one item on your agenda, and I originally had it as a wrap up, but, and I should thank you all, by the way, thank you for agreeing to have a special, another special meeting on April 8th, which will allow me some time to get a drafted report for you, so you can take a look at that ahead of time, because this is, it's too big for me to be able to make sure I have everything that has taken place over the last four days. So tomorrow is site plan review, and any of the loose ends that you might have, and we can certainly discuss, we can go over at that point in time, if you like, Mr. Chairman, we can go over at that point in time, the, the purposes of zoning and the consistency with the comprehensive plan, and, and so, anyone wants to brush up on it, it's already in your report.
Yep.
The, the standards for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and I did list out the 16 purposes of zoning.
Good. I'd like to thank the staff, and I'd like to thank this board, but I'd also like to put in that regardless of what is in that report, and whatever details have been hashed out, we have not had the proper time to do this properly, especially with the dynamics of these changes and the permanent implications of these. This should have been done over a long period of time, where we're given things one at a time to really go in, give a proper recommendation, done workshops with, with the town council to go forward with this, so. Whatever do, we do have for recommendations, they will be limited because of the scope of this and the time that we were allotted, but we're gonna get this in in our 45 days no matter what, so. So thank you again to staff, I appreciate all of you and all the work you do and the fact that you put up with me. Board members, thank you. You guys always come from places that I don't expect, because I don't necessarily think that way, so I thank you for filling in things. Thank you for the public. I think the sad thing is, probably 95% of the town does not know what's going on, and it won't, and, but that is, that is what is. So thank you for tonight, we'll see you tomorrow night. My favorite part, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved the table.
Seconded? No. Do I have a seconded? It is non-debatable, all those in...